Good morning, good evening and good afternoon. Good morning, good evening and good afternoon, home right in and solemn matter. What do you mean pay up? Oh, actually, I have very little money left. Good morning, good evening and good afternoon, home right in and solemn matter, returner. Name double-doson fire. Welcome to the stream and hello Inferno God, welcome, welcome. Do I pay the fine or do I restart?
Alright, I'll pay. I don't want any trouble.
Why can't, why can't I just punch people on the freaking street? It's just a small punch. How about here? Can I punch the pig? I can punch the pig. Alright, so since we are here, we need to give the book to lady... what's her name again? La- lady, lady what? B. Lady Rosa. Alright, we need to go meet Lady Rosa first before we start the other quest. As we promised, we stole the book from Meliov and now we are gonna give it to her. She'll be here, right? Okay, he's at the back, he's at the back. Why can't I just punch everyone on the street? Alright, where are they? Where's the place? Okay, it's here. Just follow the flag. How was your day Inferno and how was your day chat? My day was pretty uneventful, but it's good that way because I am very relaxed. It's a good day if you have nothing to worry about, right? Nothing. May God be with you, guard. No kidney stone, bruh. Once the, once this thing is out, it should be out completely already. Are you going to go back to get another MRI or something? Because if there is one kidney stone, there should be another one inside, for me. And that one shouldn't be a problem because it's still in the kidney. First Lady Catherine, I mean like... What's her name again? Lady Rosa. Right she?
Don't cause any trouble, got it? By the way, like you were saying about that book.
My favorite book? Pray tell, did you find it?
Yep, I found it.
Red leather, golden lay, just as you said.
You really found it? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, by the way, did you have any time to leaf through it and see what it's about?
I read a bit of it.
And what did you think?
Uh, I actually have not read any of the book. The author really isn't holding back. Alright, let's go with the charismatic answer.
The author doesn't spare anyone. I wonder if he holds anything at all sacred?
Sure he does. Courage, honor, loyalty. But others have already written enough about those. A writer is interested in what lies beneath the gilded veneer of ordliness and piety. Because it's much more interesting.
Probably you? You praising yourself? Oh my gosh, she's praising her own book. Oh, look at him, he just leaves, he don't, he doesn't want to hear about it. He's so bored, not again, not again about her book, oh my god, I'm not gonna listen to one word she's gonna say about her book, I'm gonna leave. You know what? Let's make her happy.
That's a tempting notion. Who knows? In another life, I might have become a writer.
Wouldn't you want to at least give it a try?
I suppose I'm not quite sure where you're going with this.
There is still a few blank pages left, so we could finish writing it together.
What? I'm going to put my input and I'm gonna credit? The credit is all going to you. Alright.
That sounds great.
We'll have plenty of light and privacy in my chambers. Will you escort me?
Escort you in your own home?
My pleasure.
Sure.
How should I start?
You haven't thought of anything yet?
Now, now, I have many ideas, but we must contribute in equal part.
Both? Well, fine. And what should I do?
Just tell me what you'd like to read about. A tale of a man or a woman?
Woman!
I'll take careful notes of everything.
Woman!
There are heaps of stories about men, so I propose one about a woman.
Alright, a woman then. But I'd need to know more about her.
Such as?
Tell me one trait that is important for you. What would impress you in a girl?
That she's pretty? She should be clever, make her courageous. Let's try something else back. Pretty.
Never hurts if a girl is pretty.
I was hoping for something a bit deeper than beauty.
Reputation lost. Yo, if I'm not writing about a pretty girl, I'm not gonna write about a girl.
Fine, I'll think of something else. Let's try again.
A man.
Being a man myself, a man, I suppose.
Why not? And what kind of a man is he?
You mean I have to think up a name?
You don't need to, but try to describe him, so I can better imagine him. With a single word even.
A priest, a rich man, an ordinary person. Ugh. A priest.
How about a priest or a vicar? That could be interesting.
Well, I've never taken much of a liking to them, but if you say so.
And let's make the story fucked up. About the church, about Godwin, about the hypocrisy of the priests. Alright.
Their hypocrisy bothers me. I've yet to meet a priest who isn't hiding something.
Aren't you playing advocate of steaboli? They can't all be rotten and evil.
Oh, but they can. One chases women, another likes to drink, a third used to poach when he was young, and a fourth still does. And then they lecture us in church about how to be God-fearing Christians.
What if I take that as a criticism then? Not a Philip Hic, of course, more like a little nudge.
You are not afraid, better not provoke anyone. About Johanka or Skalitz. I don't remember who Johanka is. I don't even remember what, who said Skalitz anymore. My mind has been, Skalitz has been erased from my memory.
What's this? The lady wants to be like Yanhus, just younger and prettier.
If father heard me, he would give me a tongue-lashing, but at least I could change something.
You're waiting for Rosa to finish your story. That's not my story. Only gave her themes about a story.
Well, just about finished.
Well, let's have a look.
Not yet. Something's missing.
What?
A picture. I don't trust myself with proper illumination, but I think I can handle sketch, especially if you'll be my model.
What?
Yo, I don't wanna be that loser.
Do you know how a priest gets ready to pray? He crosses himself, clasps his hands and such. Show me that, so I can capture it.
Well, I suppose I remember.
Yo, stop moving. He's gonna draw a steak man, medieval steak man, and I'm going to look at it and say, ooh, impressive.
Now we're done.
Finally, I'm sore all over.
Impressive.
Your suffering is over. Come take a look at what we've done.
Alright, what abomination do you make? What is this? Unfortunately, I don't know the bride, so I can't congratulate her groom. And knowing the groom too well, neither can I congratulate the bride. What the freak is this? Oh, there it is, there it is. The priest thing. One priest in Prague didn't like the fact that his parishioners didn't want to buy indulgence. The treasury in the church was empty, but even some really wealthy people were coming to confession. And the priests knew they had something to confess. So one say, oh, one say wait, so one day, as the people were gathering to leave after mass, he announced so that everyone could hear. "Good people, believe me, I am very reluctant to do this, but I must hear that there is a man among us." Among us? "Who is having a sinful affair with his neighbor's wife." Remember the Seventh Commandment, thou shalt... Wait, I can't read, what's that? Does thou shaft? The S-H-A, H-A, ah, fuck it. "Thou shalt not commit adultery, and listen to me well. If there are not at least a hundred and twenty Grotshin in the treasury by tomorrow evening, I will publicly proclaim who the sinner is among us." That's not right, you can't do that, what the freak? The parishioners dispersed to their homes, whispering excitedly among themselves as to whom the priest could possibly be talking about. The latter only smiled under his beard, looking forward to seeing how he would succeed with his threat. When he opened the treasury the next evening, he found not one hundred and twenty, but a whole three hundred Grotshin, and a small folded note with the following message. "Have mercy, Father, and give me one more day, I will get the other sixty somewhere." But then he is not supposed to do that. He can't tell anyone that who is confessed. So this priest also said, "He lied." Disgusting. Alright.
So what about that story of ours? Tell me your impressions.
Pretty shit. What, what I can't tell that you wrote it, if only there were more such books, I expect something better. Oh my gosh. Oh my god.
Well, what can I say? I expected something better, I suppose.
It's your work as well. You can't braid a whip out of cowhide.
I just...
And what about the sketch? For such a slapdash job, it's not bad, right?
Doesn't look like me at all. Thank you for the hygiene.
Well, what can I say? Your talents probably lie elsewhere than in painting.
I know I'm no master illuminator, but otherwise, I think we can be quite satisfied. And thank you for the help. I really enjoyed it.
Well, so did I.
I didn't like to know you better sometimes, maybe I should stop by again someday. I must go now.
But I must go now. What would people say if I were to spend half the day here?
It is noble of you to think of my reputation, but I think that spending more time in my company and the company of my library would certainly behoove you. If you come and ask me nicely, I'll be happy to help you with it.
Sure. Alright. I wonder what she has in her closet, hold on. Wait till she leaves first. Ooh. Nothing for me. Oh yeah, today's menu is water. Why does she have lockpicks, by the way? Mine. Greetings, we don't know each other, however, I'm here to remind you that chat and you are awesome and you matter. You matter too. Anna Stor-Vallen, welcome to the stream. And thank you, hope you have a fantastic rest of the stream, I'm off to spread more good vibes. Oh, I gotta spread, alright. Thank you for listening, thank you, thank you. Good vibe.
The poor thing, it's her fault for being so thick. A strange woman visits her old man every day and she still hasn't twigged. And the way they talk to each other. "Look at this nice barn I brought for you," she says. "Doesn't it smell nice?"
I can't say no to that, and you just have to taste my sausage. It's ready and waiting for you.
Oh my god!
Careful!
Uh, I don't know what sausage they're talking about, but it's gonna be very tasty. I just want to go inside this massive church, dude. Looks so good. Food. Uh... I hope you get drunk and stumble on the ground. Here you go. Hey, where do I go now? I wanna do the main quest, that's what I'm gonna do.
My wife is ailing, deadly ill, I swear.
Really? How many times does that make it?
He has a lot of wives!
Just you wait, you sack of shit. I'll rip out your tongue and throw it to the dogs.
No, please. You can't do that. Help me, somebody help!
What can I do? Oh shit! Yo, he has, he has a few dozen wives to feed. Yo, help me, help me, come on! Yeah, 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 yeah. He has a few dozen wives, he has six wives, come on! Yeah, yeah, hit him, hit him, hit him. Hell yeah, no mess for us, fucker! Hello, my fellow KCD. Enjoy, yeah, hello Chesley, welcome to the stream. Yo, no thanks? No thanks at all? Hello Primus, welcome to the stream. Ah, that's what you get. That's what you get, that's what you get! I don't, I don't really care if he was lying or not, I just wanna beat someone up. What did you got for Christmas? Ah, what did I get for Christmas? Actually, nothing, I was streaming on Christmas, was I streaming on Christmas? I got good vibes for Christmas, that's all I got. But Christmas was last year. I'm looking for someone, I have no idea where he is. The freakiest, what a freak. Why are they looking for me, huh? Why? Oh shit, am I trapped? It is today, now wait, today's Christmas? Merry Christmas. Why you gonna get me? Where's Bavak? There he is. No, that's not him. Is it upstairs? Yo, how many levels does his house have? Is it here? What the freak? Come find him! Holy shit! Don't mind if I do. He has nothing, dude. Holy. Uh, there it is. I only take Grotshin now. Maybe not, how about that too? Uh, nothing here. Where's Bavak? Hello Cyber Sam, welcome to the stream. What's up, Cyber Sam? Where's Bavak? Holy shit, dude. It's not here. I know, I know, I need to find Bavak. Where is he? Oh no. Not much, this weekend's kinda sucked, but that's okay. Why did it suck? Oh my god, finally. But do you get like some good food?
Glad to see you again.
You have the gall to show me your face again? I'll call the guards.
Hold your horses. I'll come in peace. Actually, I have a little offer for you.
You've come to blackmail me again?
Call it what you like. I need to get into the city council assembly, and I reckon you can help me.
The assembly? The one King Sigismund is supposed to attend in person?
Yeah. Sigismund is not my king.
Sigismund's just a usurper. Wenceslas is the only true Bohemian king.
Singing Rutard's song, eh? I might have known. Speak then. What do you want? And tell the truth.
I want to present myself to high society. I want to know what Sigismund want from the council. Uh...
Well, I just wanna climb the social ladder a bit. Nothing wrong with that, is there?
I mean, there were certain things that... I hope you feel better then.
If you wanna keep your position and your head on your shoulders, you'd better shape up.
Alright, alright. Maybe we can make a deal. If I get you into the council, you'll behave appropriately and you won't betray yourself.
I'm here to stream and entertain you to make your day better. If I can. I'm always here. Wait. And that will be the end of business together. How about a few Grotshin? Yo, what did he say? What did he say?
Alright. That seems like a fair deal.
You can get into the council assembly relatively easily. My cook's son will be serving there. He's roughly around your age. Maybe he can be persuaded to let you stand in for him. Although, not everyone would want to give up an opportunity to serve the King of Hungary.
Why would I wanna serve... Or the king? What do I need for the job? What's his name? Where can I find this boy?
What would work on him? How can I persuade him to give me his job?
Would you like me to give you a letter for him? I told you how to get to the assembly, now do your part!
Who's this boy?
Franta's his name. Franta Cooldown. He's an idler and a boozer, but he's proved his worth as a waiter. Which reminds me, you'll need his letter of permission to serve in the council. Otherwise, you won't be let inside.
What will I need to work as a waiter there?
Fast feet and good manners. And the livery of a royal waiter.
Excuse me?
Do you think you can serve the king in a torn shirt and muddy hose?
Well, no. But I never heard about any livery before.
What's livery?
Our usual waiter had a brand-new livery made specially for meeting the king. Don't even show up there without it.
Where can I find the cook's boy?
He's supposed to pick up his new clothes at the market today, from Master Taylor Schneider. You'll almost certainly run into him there. That is, if he's up and about after his boozing bout. I swear, that fellow practically lives at that tin hen.
At the what?
That German alehouse, the Iron Eagle. That is some Eisen and Adler.
Alright, alright.
See you at the council.
Just make sure we both come out of it alive.
He has a huge purse! Wait, I'm... I'm in... I'm in his house right now, right? He must have a lot of money somewhere. Okay, okay. I am currently not unwelcome here, so it's fine. Let's go back up and see what I can get. Again. That one's locked. Skill books! Holy shit, that's more variable than any Grotchen I'm gonna rob! That scared me, I thought someone crept up behind me. Are they still looking for me before I... Because I beat up some, like... Noblemen? Because they were beating up... A townsman? What a freak! I was trying to protect him! Wait, this is the food... Baker! Oh yeah, comes to think of it, I need a lot of food. I only left with dried apple. And... Oh, I don't need to sleep. Fine. Taylor, Taylor, Taylor. Rest in master Taylor. Here? There it is. I wonder if they're still awake? They are not. Shave your snacks! Only have two. Bring one first then. Oh crap. I don't think they're asleep yet, but... They shouldn't... They shouldn't be downstairs at least. Alright. I need some new shoes. I wear... I wore the same shoes from the start of the game to now. I don't... I don't even know where to buy the shoes! All that I can see here are like pants and shit. And I... I'm desperately need a lot of... I'm des... I'm in desperate need of money. I'm going off to steal cash. Uh... Shit, they are not asleep yet. They better close the door. Why is this easy? This supposed to be the main room? But whatever. Thank you so much for the follow, Hellhelm's Knight, welcome to the stream! Yo, where's the owner? What? Where's the tailor? This one? Ah, there he is! Master Torchmark... I don't know how to pronounce that. Hey, gonna get his keys. Thank you for the hip pad! What? Wasn't it opening? Already got his key! Oh my god! The wives has his keys! Of course! Of course! Did the hip pad play? I wanna ask... If not, I have to fix that. Alright, time to get out of here. Oh crap, I should have just walked out the front door. Now what? Hello, Stone Tonic, welcome to the stream! Wha... What is this place? Hey, where am I? Where am I? Oh shit, it's... The Scribe! I've always wanted to steal something from the Scribe! All the skill books and shit! Holy, man, holy shit! And I finally found it! God dang it, where are the books? What's that sound? Shut up! What a freak! Why is it... Why was it be so loud? No way, the books are not here! You're lucky that I don't kill you. Very hard. Not very hard for me. Oh fuck! This is not the Scribe! Captain's mace, raven's beak. Ooh, I need some high boots. Hey, jewelry... Fuck it. I need the skill books, man, where do they even keep it? Kuton Bird Night Shield! Why is it so cheap? Why is everybody... Everything here so cheap? Fuck it, I'm not gonna steal that. This should be the Scribe! Ooh... Maybe here? Okay, at least I have honey. Oh fuck! That one is here then! Oh fuck it! Yo, why the... Where is all the books? Oh fuck it! One fat bitch! Why do you... Why do we have so many people coming here to like, say one word and leave? Today is weird. Maybe upstairs? Whoa! What even is this place? I seriously have no idea where I am. I'm in a train! Alright, can I just steal the indulgence chest? It's mine! If you think about it, you don't need a high-end PC to play the game when you have... Have AI-generated photos fast enough with keyboard. AI? No AI! Yo, I robbed a church! What a useless place to rob, there's nothing here. Better close the door. I have Tyrant! I need to leave. This is a waste of time. How about here? Okay, let me check what time is it. Oh shit, everybody's awake now! Grab everything, grab everything. Hell yeah, here's all the books! I still got about an hour... Before they all wake... And do stuff. Time to leave. I got sin? Who cares, I only live once. Ah, better close the door then. What a good day, what a good day. Let's go. Time to head back to the tavern to put all my loot. Should be somewhere here. From what I know, if you just want to... If you want to rent a room in a town... Just give them the full price of like several days. From what I know, they just give you the room forever, like just 100 groschen, that's about it. It has been like more than 20 days since I rented the room and the room is still available for me for free. And that only cost 100 groschen. That's very cheap. All the books should be... Batted as... Non-stolen within, I guess, five days. Get a shot. Grab these. Okay, better load it up first. And time to sleep and save. Merkies and pick a line, you're my favorite cake because everything is better when I'm with you. What? Better! I am not a waiter. Okay, I need to wait- I need to go and visit the tailor somewhere. Where is the tailor? What? I heard you sold clothes for a frantic cooldown. Will you sell the clothes to me? 2,000? No way! No way, 2,000. I'm gonna wait for him to come then. I'm not gonna pay 2,000, holy shit, that's a lot of money. I'm going to be poor. Hello DavyDoc, welcome to the stream. That's what I did! I purposely did not say the word "call me". Oh my god, is David okay? Call you David, oh DavyDoc. Call me DavyDoc. Oh my gosh, alright, your name now is DavyDoc. It's not De- it's not David, it's DavyDoc. I want the clothes. I'll do- I can't do a better job. I have important news for the king!
I see.
Oh shit, yes? I'm a royalty! White flag.
Thanks, I won't disgrace you, I promise.
Bro, excuse me? Oh, there it is. Okay, where did I save? Where did I save? Load game? Check the time, alright, it's already saved. That means I have to wear the waiter's costume? Report for duty, where? Where do I report duty? The freak? Uh. It need to be s- Something A is long and straight, B is somewhat thick? I was reading it! Are you making fun of me? Peasant! I wanna trade. Do you have honey? No honey, no money. Barchit? What is that? I need shoes. Why none of you sells shoes? Holy shoot! If you have honey, your money would be stolen? Bro. What do you want? Why do you call me bastard? I did not do anything. Oh, I got... I got one recipe I have not stole. I'm going to come back during the night. Why buy things from vendors if you can get it for free at night? Alright, chat? Is it him?
Franta cooldown sent me. I'm to stand in for him at the council assembly.
Franta's not coming? What's wrong with him?
I'm better!
He got poisoned. Probably from food, he's writhing in agony. By turns praying and cursing, spewing from both ends.
Oh, Latin off. Alright, at least you're here. We can't be without a waiter here, when the king himself will need waiting on. So, let's have a look at you. Have you got Franta's certificate?
Sure, there is.
Hmm, everything's in order. Now, about your livery. You know a good waiter by his properly-seated cap? And you don't have one at all. Without a tunic, you're no royal waiter, just a common alehouse boy. And have you forgotten your holes? I can't let you into the chamber without them. You can put your steel aside in front of the council chamber, along with your other stuff. You won't be needing it anyway. You don't want to be dragging a load if you're running around tables. The royal waiter's livery has strict rules. So get changed quick and come back on time.
Alright, alright, alright! I'm gonna change right in front of you, alright? If that's what you want. Royal waiter's hat, alright? Royal waiter's clothes. What the freak, it looks so dirty! Uh... The hose of royal waiter, there you go. Then what, I'm going in barefooted? There you go, shoes. Then... Sword? No sword. Nothing else, right? There you go.
Here I am, let's have a look at you then. You've got a waiter's cap, a tunic you have. Hmm, hose are good. It's a good thing you've got no steel on you. You need to be light on your feet to run around tables, everything as it should be. Glad to see it lad, do you know what your duties are? For an inexperienced greenhorn like you, it'll be a great responsibility.
Of course! Actually, I wanna learn, I wanna learn.
I should certainly hope not. Now listen. A good waiter should stand in a corner, look willing and ready, and not get in anyone's way. In short, behave as if you're not there. But when one of the gentlemen calls for wine, you run and pour it for him on the double. You'll find the pitchers on a table by the door to the chapel. You take one and go to their table and pour for them, white Tokaid or red monastery wine.
White or red by the door to the chapel. Got it.
But for councillor Adam of Zargits, you must not pour at all. When he drinks, he disrupts and makes trouble. So the assembly has to be interrupted, or otherwise it never reaches an end. We can't allow that to happen in the presence of the king, alright?
Okay. For Adam of Zargits.
You pour for him with lowered eyes. Don't look at him. And the most important thing?
Stay in the background, don't give anyone the wrong drink.
Remember who wants what?
That too, but more importantly, do not disturb the councillors at their work. They have a lot to discuss. And in general, a good waiter has to be invisible, blind, and deaf.
Oh? I thought I had to keep my ears pricked.
Well, yes, but only to what anyone wants from you. No excuses, and provide everything that anyone wants from you, understood?
Absolutely. I'm a waiter after all, not some street gossip monger.
Correct, and if you manage not to botch it up, you can even rise on the social ladder.
What?
Not just anyone can serve the king of Hungary, but you'll manage it, right?
Yeah, of course! Yeah, of course! Thank you so much for the follow, Xmajormaru, welcome to the stream!
I've got something I have to do.
Something more important than the assembly of the city. If you need to go for a piss or get something to eat, off you go!
Alright, alright. I'm gonna get some poison, alright? I forgot about my poison! I'm gonna poison the king and everything will be solved! Alright, alright. Where's my tavern? Thank you for the follow, thank you, thank you! Let me grab my poison for- Fuck off! As long as I kill Sigismund! Right here and now, everything will be solved and I don't have to do anything else, right? Let me try to find a way to poison him. The fun fact, you can actually kill him! Why did you tell me that? That say like... What? Oh my gosh! Fuck! I need restart. I will not take my time... I will not take my time... To reorganize my inventory. Yeah, why did you tell me that? I wanted it to be a surprise! I wanted it to be- I want to surprise me! You wouldn't find out, most people... God...
Where are you going?
I didn't even know you can poison him! I was thinking about poisoning him! I was also thinking about just shooting him in the head with my gun! What the freak? Now the surprise is gone! Magic is gone! We're gonna find a main solution to NPCs blocking the way just by rushing through them like treating them like a ghost? Is that it? Uh... Not poison. Alright, alright. Yeah, don't tell me about it. Let me, let me, let me find out. Every time when I look at him, I must do this. Because I want to throw stones at this dude! This is what you get for scolding me?
Franta cooldown sent me. I'm to stand in for him at the council assembly.
I know what I need, wait for the city council convene.
I know everything I need to. I can do it.
Excellent! Put away your things here. It's easier to serve with a lighter load. You can wait in the cubby hole for the servants.
Nooo, my things! What do I even have? Nothing! What? Who talk to me? I don't have a weapon! Monastery wine!
I apologize, sir.
He didn't say red, he said monastery! And no red! Fuck, how do I kill him? I don't even have a weapon! Should be something here, right?
I'd like to report to the honorable council on the cleanliness of the city and the state of the public baths.
You mean baths or brothels?
Isn't it the same thing?
You throw the food on the ground? He threw the food on the ground! Oh, he was red, he was red! Sorry! His dirty noble!
More wine, master balis?
I need something from you. There is an item in my study that I confiscated from a female thief. She thought she could wriggle out of it by telling me who the item belongs to.
Ah! What is it?
The silver goblet.
Oh!
Where can I find this goblet?
But we don't have money to spare. Arguing about who is going to wash-
Huh? Where?
It's only a waste of time because we're always arguing about the same thing.
Outside, inside? Here?
Who's silver might this be?
What can I do, what can I do? Nothing, right?
Don't put words in my mouth.
Gentlemen, let's agree to disagree.
So, did you find it?
I did, master balis. Here it is.
Not so loud! Show it here. Hmm, that's it. And now go back to your job.
I got word that Rutard has pulled off another deed.
That's nothing unusual. That old weasel will never accept that the city isn't run his way. At least until his majesty honors us with his visit. And as we know, Gunslin absolutely hates him.
And see what?
I apologize, sir. Which one?
Me? Well, uh, I'm not sure what you're implying.
Hi, enemy adventure 90 snakes! Oh wait! I'm not supposed to serve wine? Who's- who am I not supposed to serve wine to? Oh, it's Adam Azazix! Oh my god! Holy shit, I gave him too much wine! He's now making a ruckus!
You were there, weren't you? Oh, that. Just a small misunderstanding. We've sorted it out and everything's settled.
My ears must be deceiving me. Are you defending Rutard? Besides, if his men attacked yours, as I've heard-
Thank you, waiter. What happened there? Leave nothing out.
I don't like Rutard, true, but in this case, he really was nothing.
Alright! All red it is!
That's true. Because if we don't do something about him-
You guys drink to lunch, holy shit! He's looking at me. There's no way I- There's no way I can steal their items, right? Everybody's looking at me, right? Alright! You better not order me like his sleeve anymore. You're lucky that I did a poison your wine!
Can I help you with, sir?
I left my gloves in the chapel. I took them off to pray, but then I rushed here and forgot to take them. I can't just get up and walk out now. But if you disappear for a little while...
Alright. I'll get them.
I knew I could count on you. While you're at it, count how many figures on the mural have wings.
Bu- Why?
Because I'm bored, and because I told you. Get on with it.
Fuck you! How many fingers on the mural? What?
That was easy enough, and he wanted me to count the winged figures.
Winged figures? Wine? Holy freak it! Wait, what does he want from me again? But counting the winged figures will be a chore! Winged figures? Oh my freaking gosh! Is everything the same? One, two... Probably two per mural? Is this a mural or is it the walls? Which one is- which one does he want me to count? Two then, fuck it! He's drunk and dead! Rob?
So, let's see what you've got for me.
I found your gloves, sir.
Really? Let's see them. And did you count those winged figures?
I counted twenty-four, sir.
And you counted correct. Good. Here you are, so you can have a bit of fun in the evening too, eh?
Hmm, thank you for the groschen! I just took a guess! Oh, red, alright! Being a waiter is fine, I wanna be a waiter!
And if they do come, their work is shit, and you have to pay someone else to put it right. It's a waste of time! I- I- I tell you, a waste of time!
Yes, I'm deaf! Thank you so much for the follow, Apex Punisher93!
That space in the side nave is mine!
Excuse me? You wanted to buy yourself an altar in the cathedral? Just like you bought yourself a seat in this council?
How dare you!
Thank you, waiter.
You'll be a waiter in this place is so easy! Just wine and wine and wine! And I get tips! Holy shit! How much groschen did I get? One groschen! I give you one groschen! Uh-huh? When will the king come? Hello Kami-san, welcome to the stream! Is that Sean Bean? Holy shit, there he is! Hopefully, he doesn't recognize my face? What? Just pour it.
You have nothing to fear, not you.
Alright. Oh, he's so kind. Ooh. At the time at Rabosch. Alright, what is this place? What's even happening? Where's my- where's my city council? What's happening here?
Come now, father. Put a little life into your dying. Seen more cheerful priests at funerals.
I'd rather be at one than here. I hoped I'd never see this fortress again in my life.
Unpleasant memories?
You have no idea. I didn't part ways with my father on entirely good terms. Twenty years ago.
And now you're two decades older and wiser, at your Ujitz parish, you spread the word of God to your flock, and you saved my neck and Henry's too. I'd say your father should be proud of you.
None of that matters a damn to him.
Who knows? Maybe that twenty years has changed a thing or two.
You know what? Let's drop the subject.
Do you know any of the guests? Who is that Frenchman? What is it like to be free? What are you going to do now? You kill him yet? I can't even do anything. When the king came? There's no cutsie, there's just one cutsie and that's that. I couldn't do anything.
Wait a moment. Rabbi, you say? The Kuttenberg Rabbi?
Yeah. He came with a retinue. But for now, they're keeping mostly to themselves. Maybe you should go and welcome some of them. After all, this used to be your home. And you're a spiritual man too, so you should have something in common.
I wouldn't be too sure, but...
Not now, maybe. Maybe later. I don't know. Who is that Frenchman?
Who's that French fellow you brought here from Maleishov?
The great Baron Brabant. Been everywhere, knows everything, and has the keys to half the kingdom. He's got more fairy tales than my old nanny.
Can he be trusted?
He's a blabbermouth, but a harmless one. Besides, he defended Kuttenberg, and you know how that went. If he were on Sigismund's side, he'd hardly have been locked up with me.
What do you plan to do now you're a free man again?
Thank you.
What do you think? Get drunk, woo one of the local wenches, and wake up in the morning with no hose and a head like a church bell?
Have you perchance forgotten we're supposed to be deciding the future of the kingdom here?
I'll leave that to the older and wiser. And duller.
Dear me. I'd rather creep off into some corner with a full wineskin. But I suppose I'll have to introduce myself to the rest of the guests, eh?
Indeed you should. After all, you are one of the lords of Rabosch.
Oh, don't start with that. I'd like to steer clear of the old man as long as I can.
In that case, you should sound out Radzig and Harnish and find out what they're actually planning.
What? I'm gonna play as this old dude right now. I can't even steal stuff. Look at what they have to eat compared to what they have at Sigismund camp. Where's the roasted pig? They have a huge roasted pig. You guys doesn't- you guys don't have it. You only have like fruits and chicken. Oh, there it is. There's your roasted pig. Does this guy not have any thievery skills, whatever? I wanna talk to Ruxik. Where is he? Where's my best man? Where's Ruxik? Meet Brabant, alright.
Good health to you, sir. I'm Godwin, a friend of that lad you arrived with, Henry. We don't know each other.
Baron Vuklaim Brabant, chevalier d'Arezzo, the last of my line. I am a warrior, a traveler, a strategist, and also, à ma manière, a poet.
My word. Isn't that exhausting?
Benoît, and I'm glad to meet a new friend.
It's a pleasure to make your acquaintance, Baron. I knew right away we'd hit it off.
How do you end up in Maleishov?
How did you end up imprisoned in Maleishov?
Ah, c'est une histoire compliquée. It was after I irrationally led the defense of Kuttenberg, and only lost it narrowly by an unfortunate turn of events.
That needs some explanation. What unfortunate turn of events?
Oh, misère. It is clear you have never been to war.
You're quite mistaken, Monsieur Baron. I have.
Ah, je suis désolé. This Bohemia is a strange land. I have seen farmhands, children, and even women fighting. But the clergy? Saint-Mère? Do tell me about it. No doubt you fought on the side of truth and honor.
No, I wasn't a clergy back then, I think.
Ah, indeed. I have heard it was a very... unequal fight.
That's a fact. No one was expecting Von Bergau to turn up with that diabolical...
The finger of God.
Diabolical, perhaps, but in my opinion, it shall be the future of warfare. Perhaps one day the generals will sit back drinking wine while such devices shall wage war for them.
Yeah, that's what it is. Just press a button and a nuke just flies out. And we can't even do anything about it. How come we haven't heard of?
I am operating, as they say, un cognito. My great benefit is my strong connection with the French court. There, everyone knows my name. Here in Bohemia, I'm still building my reputation slowly, but surely.
Such rare guests. One wouldn't expect to find among Christians representatives of your community. I'm Godwin. My greetings to you.
Peace be with you. Neither would one expect a priest here, and yet...
How do you know I'm a priest?
It's not difficult to tell. After all, we have much in common. And we are both a little on unfamiliar ground here. I'm Yehuda, leader of the rabbinical court in the sacred community of Kuttenberg. And this is Samuel, my aide.
Who would rather not be here at all? Why did we have to come here, Zadeh? Can you not see everyone is staring at us?
Because we all need to help each other in this time of need. And why would they not stare when you are frowning so?
Do you want to make use of the council to improve the status of Jews in the city?
Not at all. However, we would like to give the council something it is sorely lacking. The situation in the town and the kingdom is unsustainable. The whole land is on the brink of destruction. You have men and weapons. We have the means to sustain them.
Why are you telling this to a coymare? You wanted to deliver what we brought to the Margrave and quickly leave.
Everything in good time, Samuel. We have just arrived, after all.
Yeah, this old man wants to chill. Gonna chill a little bit.
Not to lend, but to give. Help given to the needy is repaid only by God.
You don't even know if you can trust them. With that money, we could have paid mercenaries ourselves. You remind me of my young friend, Henry. He's a bit of a hothead too. Henry? That messenger of Radzig Kobula? You know each other? You're both around the same age? That would be him. We did not get off to a very good start.
You didn't hit it off to all its human. Hopefully, you'll get to know each other better soon.
I reckon the two of you would hit it off. He's reliable, and has his heart in the right place.
Maybe not. You have never knew- you didn't knew that I am a huge beast.
Wait. A blacksmith, you say? From Skalitz? Aye, that's right. Did you know anyone there? I knew of someone. A blacksmith by the name of Martin.
My daughter knew him most, and that is why Samuel is in this world. For our numerous sins.
Maybe he was my father, but he certainly didn't act like one. Ma raised me on her own.
And that was all for the best.
We found a long-lost brother?
But instead, he fathered another bastard. Don't make hasty judgments. As far as I know, Martin didn't have any other children. At least, none of his own. He took in Henry, and raised him as his own, on the orders of the Lord of Skalitz, Sir Radzig Kobula, Henry's real father. I don't care if you took care of twenty other mamsas.
Dead boy's blood father denied him, just like yours did to you.
A person can't choose their parents. And Henry only found out about it recently. Enough. I'd rather have a drink. Will you have one too, Zadeh?
For that, there will be more suitable times.
Good health.
The Heim, alright. Come on. What else is there? I need to go back to the town council meeting, please. What's even happening? Where's Ruxik?
Dear friends and allies, in these troublesome times, you all know why we're here. The question remains: what to do next?
I don't know.
Sigismund is facing troubles in Hungary, and here too, he is up against resistance. He's a capable strategist, but a poor diplomat. Mark my words, if we wait him out until winter, he will leave of his own accord.
By winter, he'll have torched all our fortresses, and carried off everything that we possess!
Are we seriously gonna wait? And cower in a corner? Or are we gonna drive them out in shame? A few well-planned raids, and we could have him in our fists!
At what price? Have you got men to spare? Has any of you got men and money to spare?
Thank you so much for the raid!
Yes, we do!
Phantom raid, Phantom John.
Jobst is right. That horse son won't fall easily.
Can't wait!
Are we to get ourselves killed?
Or, end with nothing?
Oh, fight, 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 fight! Oh shit, Jobst is on Sigismund's side!
Friends!
How goes?
We'll get nowhere like this. Let's adjourn ourselves and try to think it through.
I'm still playing- I'm still getting through this story and having a lot of fun. And now we are in a mess. Alright, hold on. Let me give you a shout out. Thank you so much for the follow Phantom Johns. Wait, if... It doesn't show... The Twitch thing. Ooh, you're playing Phant- you're playing Kingdom Crusades 2.2. Are you already at the end, or are you still playing it? Oh, you had a great time though. I'm so addicted to this. This is like part eleven of all- it is part eleven. Like, I streamed eleven times already. How long are you in the game for? I've been playing it like almost sixty hours. One hundred hours? That means I'm faster than you! Holy! That means I'm missing a lot of content.
I have my sources. From what I've heard about you, I'd judge you could be quite useful to me at today's gathering.
Yeah, since I've been to Ruttenberg, like, at Kuttenberg, I've not do- I've not been doing a lot of side quests, maybe that's why. I'm just going around stealing stuff. I love stealing. Same as when I'm playing KCB1.
I'm curious how you hope to shut Jishka up and satisfy the ones who want peace? We'll sit and wait quietly until Sigismund withdraws of his own volition, as Jobst proposes, but we'll be waiting in the military camp of our huge new army.
What a freak. We can't afford to wait. Yeah, why do you have to pay for stuff when you can just steal it?
And besides, he's running out of resources. He's able to tackle fortresses that aren't able to defend themselves, but he won't engage an equal force on the battlefield. And that's exactly why we'll wait until he's called back to Hungary by events there. For the plan to work, we need allies, their money and their determination. We've already set the ground for it. We just need negotiators who will push the right people in the right direction.
Oh my god, he has- he's like ludush level brain, is that it? Free style is cheaper, true.
Because I want to put a stop to the senseless deaths, and also because I'm happier with Wenceslas on the Bohemian throne. I'll help you. What exactly should I do? I'll give you three names: Botcek of Kunstadt, Hamann Alder, and Anna of Waldstein. If you can get those three on our side, we've won the day. Meanwhile, I'll take care of Jobst. I'll get on it then. Wish me luck. I wish us both luck. Before the day is over, the die will be cast. Success to our plans.
He just took out a chalice from his ass, and he puts it back. and he puts it back. Brains still can't keep up with the conversation. I'm barely keeping up too. This is like straight up politics. Holy shit. Not even Botcek? Botcek of Kuddenstadt? Where is he? Botcek, where is he? Where is he? Coslin on Ruth's side. These are not the people that I'm supposed to talk to. What? Let me check again. Haman Alder. Ha- Haman? There it is.
I'd like to check your horses out. And see if they're as good as you say.
Ha, even better. But you won't believe it until you see for yourself.
And you might not believe your eyes when you do see them. Well, well, we have a new guest.
I wanted to...
You wanted to apologize for crashing into my home without a by-your-leave? Or to arrest my guests some more?
I want to have a word with Alder.
Well, I'm having a word with you.
I'm not talking to you.
I'll talk to you later, Father. This is important.
You're in my home. So you'll talk to me first. What is it you want?
Is that your...
Unfortunately. Speak up then. What are you doing here?
It's nothing of your business, huh?
I came with a delegation from Sir Hanush of Liper.
Is this a joke?
Why so strict, Martin?
Twenty years ago, he was nothing but a cheeky brat, only interested in ventures and booze. I got him a place at the Archbishopry to have some sense beaten into his head. Only it wasn't long before they kicked him out. And then, I find out he's settled in some backwater parish in Sasau. But he took his boozing and whoring along with him, lost everything, and then came creeping home again.
Try saying it again a little louder. They might not have heard you in the outer courtyard.
You have the impertinence to show me your face
I've been lucky, I've been like, need to get some food and shower. Alright, thank you so much for the link. I hope you have good food in the shower. It's gotta be a new experience.
You're exaggerating. Like you've always done.
Me? Exaggerating? You're the one who turned my home into a house of ill repute!
One new experience eating in the shower.
Your whores wandering around as if they owned the place!
Aye. Actually, anything fun was strictly banned under your roof. But maybe you ought to try it yourself sometime. Then maybe you wouldn't be such a bitter old roach.
You're dishonoring your host.
I can't dishonor someone who has no honor. If you had any, you'd be-
That's enough!
Christopher.
You won't get away with those insults. I challenge you to a duel.
What? This escalated too quickly?
I'm not happy about it. But I accept. This isn't how I imagined my first meeting with my brother.
That's your brother? I look like one thousand years older than you. What the freak?
Stay back! That was sneaky. Look in my eyes, not at my sword! Did they teach you that in the seminary? Go to my head! Who taught you that? Fucking hell! That was sneaky. Come on now! Take! Not bad for a priest. Cover your right side! You've got a gap there I could drive a cart through! Left arm low! You don't know which end of that thing is up! What's wrong with your legs? Stand firm! Otherwise, the first strike will put you on your arse! Not bad for a priest. Swing with your whole arm, not just your wrist!
Why am I lecturing him? What, that's it?
My god. Where did you learn to wield a sword like that? Father always said you were a good-for-nothing booser. You could teach swordfighting in a school. I was in a war. Right after they kicked me out of the Archbishopry. And you ought to know yourself-
Are you sure he's your brother? Godwin looks like his grandfather, dude. What the-
I apologize for going off like that. I had to, so that so Father would be satisfied. I know. Only he'll never be satisfied. And the sooner you realize that, the better.
I thought he was the way he was because his first son let him down. And he hoped at least his second would become something.
Not at all. I remember him the same since I was a nipper. When I was six years old, I fell off a horse and broke my leg. He wouldn't talk to me for a week because I'd let him down.
The first time he took me hunting, he let me starve for three days until I was able to shoot my first hare.
Only three days? He got soft.
I always wondered who you were. There was never much talk about you at home.
Look, I really did fuck up everything I could. I brawled and boozed until they threw me out of my own parish. But now, I have a chance to put things to rights a little.
And that's why you want to talk to Alder?
I've got to get him on our side and to cooperate with us.
Aren't we all on the same side?
Maybe everyone's saying that. But it's time to put it into action.
After your encounter with Father, it won't be easy to get to Alder. Actually, I don't think you should even attempt it. Unless you want to anger Father even more.
What else can I do, though?
I'll talk to him myself. He'll hear me out for sure. But you'll have to trust me. And tell me what it's all about.
Do I have any choice?
If it's really that important, you don't.
Alright then. You've heard Jobst's plan, right? It's a nice idea, but we can't wait around without an army to back us up.
Only no one's going to pay for one because that would be an outright admission of rebelling against Sigismund.
Alder's got some clout with the counselors and burgers who are loyal to Sigismund. If he agrees, they'll follow.
I expect Alder's not the only one you're after.
You got that right.
Leave Alder to me. The plan sounds sensible and he's no fool.
I don't know how to thank you.
You can drag me to a tavern sometime. Pa doesn't need to know about it.
You're starting to sound like a brother.
Let's go, we found our brother. And now what? Yo, it's Radzik. Can I talk to Radzik?
Godwin, you wouldn't be avoiding me. We didn't have much time for conversation on the way here. Let's rectify that.
With pleasure, sir. As it happens, there's something I'd like to ask you.
Your son's got talent for trouble, doesn't he?
I couldn't help but notice your son has a bit of a talent for getting into trouble.
To put it mildly. But not to do him an injustice, knowing young Lord Capeon. He undoubtedly contributed to that more than a little. Although, if they didn't pull each other out of trouble, God knows where they'd be now.
Wise words. Still, Henry's come a long way on a thorny path. I trust you're rightfully proud of him.
You know, I am. And Martin would also be glad, even though Henry chose a different path than he.
May God grant him eternal rest. What are you expecting from today's gathering, my lord?
Well, I have no great expectations. But, all going well, we may be able to establish some joint steps towards the future. As long as we proceed with that prior agreement and mutual support, we will be very unlikely to achieve any progress.
I want to talk to him more because he's a funny man, but he's just talking about politics. I thought he would be a little bit more funny. Yo, where's your humor, Radzik? Where's your humor? Let me Hanush of Liper would satisfy- oh, 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 that's a little bit- oh, that's a little bit too close.
May I have a word with you, sir?
You? Anytime. With you, at least there's some sensible conversation. Unlike this pack of conceited upstarts.
Young Lord Capeon is finally free again. Let's hope he'll take better care of himself now.
He got a harsh lesson. But at least he might remember to lay off that tomfoolery of his for a while. But if not, war will make a man of him soon enough.
Do you think there's really going to be a war? I mean, a proper one. Not just sitting around and talking about it.
I sincerely hope so. Whoever sits around risks nothing.
Why, you want war?
It's time to get off our asses and take action.
What do you think about Jobst?
Are you testing me? Jobst called this assembly and he wants things to turn out well. We have to trust him.
To turn out well for whose benefit, though? Some are up to their elbows in silver and blood. So others can live in freedom.
Better make sure you're among the latter, then. And in the meanwhile, help the former to keep their losses to a minimum.
Doesn't say anything. Who is this? Oh, Dry Devil. Why is he here? Alright, I thought he was just a drunk dude. Uh... Alright, who do I need to talk to? Anna of Waldstein. Anna. I don't see any woman. Anna?
God bless. Jesus Christ be praised.
Okay. Let's find Botcek first then. I can't find Anna. Can't find her anywhere. Botcek, Botcek, Botcek. Is that her?
God be with you, noble lady. There's something I'd like to ask of you.
God be with you. What would that be?
Your diplomatic support. And your money.
No beating around the bush, eh? I like that. But what do you want my money for?
Margrave Jobst's plan has some gaps, milady. We need to gather enough resources to-
To muster an army that Margrave can't afford on his own?
Christ. Be praised. You're astute.
I should say so. All sorts of people have their eyes on my money. And divining their intentions is a necessity.
Why does all- why does everyone here have this glitch where their eyes and mouth are glowing? How do I fix that?
How do you know Liechtenstein is behind it?
I know most of the people here very well.
Look at her face!
Many of them certainly have doubts about the Margrave's plans. But they wouldn't dream of stating them aloud. While it seems that Lord Liechtenstein, on the contrary, sees his opportunity.
I'd say you have a better nose for people than most of this crew.
Not only for people, but also for good food and wine. And beneficial deals.
Can you have kind of the right please? Who taught you that?
Who did you learn from? In my experience, women usually learn other skills.
I acquired the basics from my husband. God rest his soul.
Thank you so much for the follow, Curse Green.
As soon as others started sniffing around his estate. So, to the point. What is it that Liechtenstein wants from me?
Martin!
Nothing more than support and resources for an army to parley more effectively with Sigismund.
Nothing more? I'd say that's plenty. And why ask me for help? Why should I, of all people, take the risk?
Your wealth needs protection. Sigismund will not take revenge on a woman. You have got money, but you are wise as well. Alright, the last choice then.
It's not only your money we're interested in. You're well able to negotiate and trade. And if you were to take part in our plan-
Then I'd be helpful to you on two fronts. If you want me to support you, you must give me a good reason. Perhaps, a favor in return.
Do you have something in particular in mind?
Well. One of the guests here has something that shouldn't get into the wrong hands.
Who's that?
Haman Alder. Now. If you were to switch these papers for the ones he brought with him, I would support your proposal.
Haman Alder?
And the papers I'm supposed to plant on Alder?
Just insignificant documents. If the incriminating ones disappeared without a trace, it would arouse suspicion.
And these papers I'm supposed to switch? What do they concern?
My relatives somehow dug up some trade contracts between myself and certain undesirable parties.
You were dealing with the enemy.
They were not the enemy at the time. My conscience is clear. But I'll rest easier when those papers are in my hands.
Alright, I'll help you. Or at least I'll give it a try.
Alder will surely have the papers in his saddlebags, which he left in the shed on the outer courtyard. Bring them to me. And put these there instead.
Alright, my lady.
Odorin's groom has eyes everywhere.
Woo, sneaking- sneaking quests. I like it. Alright, where is it? And hello, deep shithead. Welcome to the stream. And thank you for coming. Inside this saddle. Oh, this guy. What? Switch a bunch of papers bought by Haman Alder from a package herself within Godwin? Wait, where though? In the saddlebag. Saddlebag. How do I know which horse is it? Is it this horse? Inside here? Okay, how do I distract? This dude then. What's inside?
God bless. Aren't you a bit bored? What's your problem? The horses are fed and watered. I'm not idle. God forbid. But standing around here must be a pain in the arse, no? You might get thirsty. Not really. What of it? Shall we roll some dice? I'm sure you can take a little breather, eh? Well, alright. But just for a little while. I'll wait at the table over there.
Table? Alright. I don't- yo, this guy doesn't have any luck picking skills whatsoever, dude. Alright, not to raise any suspicion, I need to play dice with him.
We'll see whose side luck is on today.
Ah, one... Five... Wait. Two, four, six. Triple six. It's not triple six, no.
Let it be now. I wanna play too, you know?
I wanna play two, you know?
Alright, let's not risk it.
It's yours.
Please, give me triple six. Three, four, five... Ooh, three, four, five, six? Gosh dang it. Five. I just need 400 more, chat. He doesn't even have a cheat die. It's insane. He's gonna bust, he's gonna bust, no way. Bust! Bust! What a lucky fella. He's still going.
Damn, shit!
He doesn't even know how to play the game. Five, five, five. There you go.
Good game, friend. The money's yours.
What money?
I've got those papers from Alder for you.
Quiet! You don't have to announce it to everyone.
Lady, with all the clamor going on here, I can hardly hear my own thoughts. Here they are.
You're more capable than I expected. Thanks for the help.
You're welcome. And now you're part of the bargain.
As agreed. I will support Liechtenstein's proposal with both words and money.
Thank you, noble lady. God will...
Yes, quite. But let's drink to our bargain, Godwin.
How could I refuse a toast with such a fine lady? To your health, Lady Anna.
And to the success of our efforts.
Well, that was easy. We got one guy left. Where is he? Why is he just standing there? Ah... Where is Botchek? I don't find him. Is he downstairs?
Sir Botchek, I need to speak with you for a moment.
A man hardly puts his cup to his lips and...
Oh my god, how many wrinkles does he have?
Jobst comes up with a plan as full of holes as a beggar's shoes, and now you're all jostling to win me over for him?
On the contrary. I've come here with an idea how to improve it.
Does that improvement include a few thousand men at arms? If not, you can go to the devil with it.
A few thousand men at arms as a convincing argument. And a hundred horsemen on top, only in order to get them. We need coin.
You've got my attention, but not my money yet.
Other people will provide money too. How can I convince you? Aren't we on the same side?
Don't worry, it's not just your money I want to draw on. Believe it or not, we've gained other patrons for our cause too.
Really? Name at least one of those lunatics then.
Anna of Waldstein, for instance.
Truly? Well, let's see about it then.
I wouldn't mention the word lunatic.
Alright, let's discuss it candidly. I have a lot of property, lots of subjects to look after, and along with that, the lord blessed me with a large family. I can't risk it all in a conflict with Sigismund.
So you need guarantees that you won't be left standing in the cold if you openly oppose Sigismund?
My guarantee is called Yitka. She's my niece. If I succeeded in marrying her off to another stronghouse, I'll have the certainty that I won't be left alone.
Maybe it's enough to find a suitable groom among the allies.
Perhaps, someone of suitable standing who Yitka would also gladly accept. I don't want her to be unhappy.
Oh my god, I know who it is! Lord Capon!
How about young Lord Capon?
He's a youngster still.
Oh shit! Yitka wouldn't want to marry an old man. You're right, he's not a good choice. Well... I don't want to marry all of Hans Capon to someone who's super old.
Maybe you're right. I reckon he's not ready for marriage yet.
No man of any age ever is. But it's especially true for young rascals like that one. On the other hand, the lords of Leipa have a good reputation, and Hanush can always be relied on despite his temper. Maybe it's not such a bad idea.
So do you want him or not?
I'll convey your offer to Lord Capon. If he agrees, we can celebrate our alliance.
I don't care what the young lord thinks. Hanush is the one to decide. If he agrees, I'll be happy to support your plan.
Pushing a friend to tie their knot to save the kingdom. Things have come to a pretty pass.
The kingdom will not forget his sacrifice. Now stop dilly-dallying and go and tell Hanush.
No way! What's downstairs? I'm gonna talk to Lord Capon first, see what he thinks.
I've got some good news and some bad news for you.
The bad news is there's hardly any females in this whole damned place. There's some old bat standing there with two young girls, but she watches over them like a mother hen. So at least tell me the good news.
You're going to get married.
I could! Is she at least pretty?
I don't know! I've never seen her!
Wait till Hanush hears this.
Oh my god.
Enough nonsense, let's have a drink! To your health and my freedom!
To your health!
His face is so serious. Oh my gosh! Yo, how does she even look like? If she's some old hag, Hans Capon would be crying in one corner.
Take a look at that.
Sir Hanush, I bring happy tidings.
You do? Let's hear it then.
Young Lord Capon is going to get married!
If he's got some impoverished noble's daughter pregnant, I'll have his hide! I'm not going to support some bastard!
You misunderstood my meaning. I was the one who arranged the patrothal. I mean, with your blessing.
You arranged a marriage for my ward? Just like that? With who?
With the niece of Sir Botchek, lord of Kunstadt. Her name's Yitka.
Botchek of Kunstadt? The Botchek of Kunstadt? Godwin, you conniving old bastard!
Why? Why, why, why?
I don't believe it! So, young Hans is to marry Kunstadt's daughter?
Niece.
If you're serious, I'll make sure that you get the Rattay parish!
Or you could make me the abbot of Sassar. Or what about a bishop, brig?
Forget it! Soon I'll be paying for a wedding. Not a word to Hans. I want to tell him myself. But let's drink to it, shall we?
What?
Cheers! Cheers to you!
Cheers!
And to your parlaying skills!
Hans would not be happy about that. Oh my freaking god. Alright. I really want to know what she looks like, though, chat.
That they were.
Sir Botchek, your niece Yitka can start preparing for her wedding.
So Hanush agreed? Without reservations?
Indeed.
Then I will fulfill my end of the bargain without reservation.
Thank you, lord of Kunstadt.
Enough formality. We'll have a drink. What do you say?
How many drinks do I have already? Holy...
Cheers to the beautiful lady Yitka and the unhappy Lord Capon.
Cheers to a good bargain!
Good bargain? How does that niece look like anyway? What?
But maybe you were right.
Gentlemen, I think we can raise our goblets to the successful conclusion of the negotiations.
Is this supposed to be your secret weapon?
Like I said, miracles happen where you least expect them. Tell me, Godwin of the House of Oderin, what news do you bring us?
I bring nothing from the House of Oderin. But the widow of Waldstein and Sir Botchek of Kunstadt will support our cause.
Both of them? Good heavens, what did you promise them?
This is going to be a long story, and I could use a drink. So if you'll excuse me, my lords.
It would seem that we have all benefited from the break in these proceedings. New alliances have been formed.
Oh shit!
And I have also changed my plans. We shall still wait for Sigismund to withdraw his troops of his own accord. But... we will wait with an army at our backs!
Yay!
And how are we to raise an army? Wasn't it made clear at the meeting that no one wants to take the risk?
The only thing made clear was that each of us alone is weak, and that we could not find common ground. But that has now changed.
King Wenceslas is, by the will of God, the barbatum of all his subjects. Not only the Christians, our community and not only ours, will give you coin.
Yes!
Yay!
The Gutenberg houses are still loyal to King Wenceslas, and we stand with Lord Ruthard.
And if that's not enough, the houses of Leipa and Kunstadt will unite and march side by side!
My niece, Yitka, will take young Lord Capon as her husband.
Oh shit! Oh shit!
Lords Kunstadt, Hanush, Radzig, and I will set out immediately. God willing, we will be back in three weeks along with an army.
Now those are words worthy of a nobleman.
My friend, I still believe that words are more powerful than swords. And our words will ring in a thousand voices to the glory of King Wenceslas!
Okay, what's Lord Capon's gonna do then? What's he gonna do? Oh my god, he's looking at the window now. He's gonna cry! Why is the cut scene so loud, by the way? It's always so loud. Okay, we are back at the city hall.
After we conquered the city, you promised to restore order immediately. And then I find out things are even more disordered than before!
Your majesty, we are sorry. We will, we will put it to rights.
You've already said that! I want to hear real solutions!
We will put more guards on the roads and toughen penalties. We can have a few captured bandits executed as an example to others.
We do not care about bandits. We care about rebellious nobles and burglars! What will you do with them?
Oh my god, what about the fries?
How will you solve the chaos in the town administration? The rebellious miners and the dismay yields? And how is it even possible that a rebellion against the king is smoldering here in the city?
That's a wicked slap to the table!
I hear the resistance is coming from the Jewish quarter. From right under your noses. Why haven't you done anything?
We... We don't know who is behind this. Without evidence, we cannot punish them.
Otto von Bergoff did not ask questions in Prague either. He acted. And I advise you to do the same. Find a couple of wretches in a hole somewhere. Point them to the Jewish quarter and give them free rein. To do anything. The city's Jewish community was and still is on Wenceslas' side. They need a warning.
Ew!
We... We do not even have enough men to...
Markwart, could you spare a few men for a while?
Of course, sire. I'll assign them to Eric. He'll take care of it.
So you see? All you have to do is make sure the city rabble get their share. You could at least manage that, couldn't you? And if the thought should cross your minds that you would get rid of the depths to the Jewish moneylanders this way, forget about it. Your depths will remain. Up to the last groschen. Only now you owe us directly. And while we are on the subject of money, has the yield from the mines finally matched last year's?
Sire, the deposits are dwindling.
Oh shit!
And mining is becoming increasingly difficult. And to make matters worse,
I'm rich!
The miners started rebelling.
Don't take us for a fool. They'll stop rebelling when you pay them proper wages.
Your majesty, we can't do that.
Why?
Silence!
Why can't we pay them proper money?
You're a bunch of incompetent sycophants! Chicken shits! Not any better than the scum hiding in the forest.
And drunks! Give them hell! Lazy fools, a lot of them!
How dare you! Some of you are even swelling right here in the city council meeting!
Oh shit, he's drunk! I gave him beer! I gave him wine!
I'm telling...
Oh shit, he's gonna die!
This whole council is a farce! The whole city knows it!
Lord of Zauschitz, your insolence just cost you your place on the council and a month in the dungeon.
But... But...
Hopefully that'll be enough for him to sober up. And if not, put him in the pillory for a while, bailiff.
I'll see to it as soon as the council is over, your majesty.
All I hear from you over and over again are excuses and prevarication. And results? None. I therefore placed the city council under the authority of Sir Markwart von Aulitz, who is present here, with immediate effect. He will make sure you finally do your duty.
But sire, that would be a violation of the privileges granted to us as a free... But sire, that would be a violation of the privileges granted to us as a free mining town.
Silence! I am the only guarantor of your rights. You have to earn your privileges, not hide behind them. During my brother's reign, this idleness was perhaps tolerated. But that is over now. You were given a few simple tasks. But instead of working on them, you idled in the baths and lined your pockets. And let the traitors cast their nets undisturbed. But unlike my brother, I am capable of creating order. And I assure you, I do not distinguish between those who stand in my way.
Stop hitting the table, man!
Be their baggers, nobleman, or city councillors.
Everybody's so scared, look at them.
You have two weeks to restore order in the city and increase mining output. I want clear results. And you answer only to me and Sir Markwart von Aulitz now. No one else.
Yes, sire.
The council is dismissed. You, don't go anywhere, boy.
What do you want me to do?
Be so kind and remain here. Our throat has become rather dry. And we still wish to speak with our friend von Aulitz.
Yes, sire. As you wish, sire.
Between the two of us, Markwart. What kind of a donkey?
Alright. That was funny.
Between the two of us, Markwart. Was I not perhaps too harsh on them? And speak candidly. We have had enough of false flattering.
Sire. You were harsh, but rightfully so. These councillors may need to be shown their place.
What do I need to do? Well, look who's trying to kill Sigismund. No, not now. I'm just figuring it out. Since you say you can kill him, holy shit.
Otto repeated to us several times that it is time to strike against them. We are glad he's not here.
He would be intolerably self-satisfied if he knew we had heeded him.
What kind of a donkey have they sent me? Are you only deaf or completely stupid? I've never been so ashamed. Get out!
I, I see that I can stealth kill him, right? Yeah, but where do you find the... Thing you can stealth kill him with? Oh yeah, I need a, I need a, I need a knife.
Boy, can't you see the king's cup is empty?
You tend to us as if we were infirm. Boy, pour us a monastic wine.
Thank you so much for the follow, Qbit55. Can't find any knives, though. Freaking... Not in the room. How can I even? I can't even get out of the room. Is that a Digimon ahead? No, it's, it's the chat. You guys look like this. It's called a kindly. It's not in this room. But I can't leave this room. Maybe at some point in time, he will ask me to go out and grab something.
Are you trying to nick something?
I don't understand. Why, sometimes I can rob people and sometimes I can't? RNG.
They're cheek on you!
But the first time when, the first time when I robbed him, he didn't know. I robbed him before. He was the first one I robbed.
What are you doing in there?
Look! I did the same thing. And I, I got caught this time. I want his dice, though. I don't, I don't remember what dice he has. Might be something good. What? RNG, I told you it's RNG. Alright, the first dude doesn't have anything on him, so it's fine. Do you get, do you guys have the hit pad? Oh my gosh. I need to restart the program again. Yo, start it up! Why does it take so long? What a freak. Hold on, chat. Oh, it's broken. Sorry. I need to refund you. How do I refund? Don't worry about it. Hold on. Yeah, I have no idea how to refund either. I'm sorry. Alright, let's get on with the game. Let's see who else can I scam instead. I can't move around, right? How do I get out of here?
The nobility, on the other hand, found a ruler like him.
That's the funny thing, you don't. I poured him red white wine! This is probably the most boring class for me, not gonna lie. I like it, I like it. I like pouring wine. What's he gonna say if I pour him a wrong wine? Oh shit! Just for wrong wine? That's insane. Hello, Olaia, welcome to the stream. Wrong wine? I have to do it all over again, sorry, chat. Trying to steal his dice again.
Are you trying to nick something?
It's so weird. Are you trying to nick something? Strip die, strip die with nothing. Strip die is nothing.
Boy, can't you see the king's cup is empty?
You tend to us as if we were infirm. Boy, pour us a monastic wine. The monks had a good year.
How do I get the knife? German guy talking about Germans, how call me?
Thank you. It is a good year.
How can I kill him? Let's just not make any mistakes first. Too late to kill him. But I don't have any weapons to kill him. Gotta fire weapon before he arrives. Ohhh, shit! What kind of bow is that? Ichihens though! Guys doing it chat, we are in for the long run. Can't even save game. I poured it already, king! I couldn't find any weapon before this meeting though. We can always go back there and try. After I finish... After I finish saving here after this event. What's the point of this whole... Whole interaction here? Just pour him wine? Yeah, it is dropping on them, duh. Yeah, I know. But maybe you could like, what, fast forward it and... Immersion, right? Immersion. They seem to be very good in terms of like... Boss and subject. And he treats the... It's so crazy to prove the fact that this game has more dialogue than Baldur's Gate 3. Whoever not played Baldur's Gate 3, no, I wouldn't wanna play Baldur's Gate 3. It's not my type of game! But it looks interesting though. What about the vow? Hello dragon friend, I'm not a dragon but thank you. Hello bright witch, I am a salamander. Wow, once we've checked in, they are jokes. Blast me one joke. What's a bel... What's a beluga? Is it a whale? As you can tell, my head is leaning back on my headrest. That is why I'm like this. I'm just, I'm just chilling right now. I would gladly, I would gladly drink free wine. I don't care. Wait, if I were to get the weapon? That means I have to do the whole middle quest again where I need to convince the nobles about like joining the cause. Oh, that's a very, very long time. I would not be doing that then. I can go watch some YouTube videos then. Sad. There's gotta be someone that has a YouTube video about that, right? No way, we're gonna steal from father again! Yo, where are all these... Silly quests end. Let me kill something! Oh my gosh! It's been three quests of like just talking. This whole, this whole stream is just me talking to everyone. Talking and talking and talking. Celebrate guests, celebrate guests. Find a jog of wine. What? Where's the jog of wine again? Go ahead and no chance start searching jogs of his father's best wine. Maybe downstairs? There it is, no? Power potion. Here. Yo, this guy is so boring! He can't even steal stuff. Probably not here then. I searched every nook and cranny already. Is this it? I prefer white wine. Are you sure about that? Oh, fu- what? What is that? Oh, is this gonna be the raid wedding? Oh! Thank you for the follow, Tomoku. We are all drunk though! Hello Tomo. I'm drunk! Oh, I'm not drunk anymore! Did someone get captured? Where is this? Is that Henry? I'm still in the waiter's uniform. Sorry, the hitpad function is not available. It's broken. Sorry! Let me die first, let me die. It's broken! Alright, hold on. Gonna pin it. Sorry chat. It's just 250, just 250 points? Just, just watch this stream for an half an hour, 250 points will be right at your doorstep again.
Oh, you led him on nicely!
Oh, he has a shield!
Show me you're made of! Take that fucker out, dammit! Come to me, someone! Like a sieve!
You're done here, horsemen. That was... A close shave. A little too close. Fuck me. Do my eyes deceive me? Henry!
Godwin.
How, how did you get? Damn. I can't tell you how happy I am to see you. You turned up at just the right moment.
Is everyone alright?
Well, some are, some aren't. They captured Oderin, Kunstadt and Rutard. And they took Alder and Konrad of Vector away too.
No, our money!
What about my father? And Hanush?
They left with Jobst long before that. I am sure they're alright, but... Not everyone was so lucky.
What happened, Godwin? Who died?
Anna of Walstein. She didn't stand a chance against those butchers.
Ennem!
She was simply in the wrong place at the wrong time.
And they almost killed my brother. But only almost. Good luck.
What do you mean, almost? What happened?
I got there in time to help him, fortunately. Christopher tried to defend our father, but nearly lost his life doing it. Nothing.
Old grievances aside, Oderin is an ally, the same as Rutard and Botchek.
Oh, they all have their quirks. Cousin Botchek's a money-grabbing magpie. But I won't give up on the fucker either. We'll have to wait for the other side's move anyway. We don't even know where Von Bergoff took them.
But why is, why is Godwin still here? Isn't he supposed to like, ride off with like, Reddick and Hanush? Because they are the same?
I tried to come as soon as possible and warn you, but Von Bergoff's people beat me here.
You knew he was coming.
He wanted Oderin. He probably had no idea they'd find most of Sigismund's enemies here in one place.
I bet he couldn't believe his fucking luck!
And Sigismund will be moving at a gallop. We have to be really careful now. One wrong move, and he'll hang the lords.
Is there anything we can do?
Definitely not right now. We'll treat the wounded, bury the dead, get the hell out of here. Then we'll hide in the Devil's Den and wait for Jobst and his army.
If I survive the journey... Oh, God's teeth! That stupid nag nearly broke me in half!
The Jews of Kuttenberg are in danger.
The king announced one more thing at the council. He asked the councilors to ransack the Jewish quarter. That is... He ordered it, more like.
Fuck! Liechtenstein's got his people there. They could reveal a lot.
The city rabbi is sitting upstairs in the hall. At least he's safe here.
They're our alloys. We have to help them.
What do you mean by "we"? Everyone here is lucky to be still breathing. I can just see them all jumping to their feet and rush to save their poor Jews. Maybe Samuel will figure something out. He wanted to talk to you anyway.
He's here too?
Aye, escorting the rabbi. You should go and see them as soon as possible, and tell Liechtenstein too.
Anyway, we've got work to do. Godwin?
Give me a moment. I'll go and see Christopher first. Guard the walls and join us.
Yo, it's job after job after jobs, oh my gosh! Oh shit! Can I just loot? Do they... Do they catch me if I loot? Looks like they don't care, alright.
What will you do now?
We'll give it some thought and see. Hopefully, he will know better when you come back from Liechtenstein.
Who is this Kubianka, anyway? How long have you known each other?
We were defending a castle and hiding in the woods together. But he was always closer with the devil.
Can he be trusted?
Aye, when he's sober, that is. When he gets drunk, it's better to keep an eye on him. He's known to provoke, until fists start flying. Did you see what happened?
You mean how they wanted to cut his throat for cheating at dice?
Aye, it's best not to play with him. You'd be better off tossing your coins straight into a pile of shit.
He's looting the attackers. I will do too! $1,900, holy crap! Yo! So many loots on them. There's so many attackers, man, they are all dead. Yo, this guy has a gold doppelganger bag. Holy shit. That's pretty rare. Whoa! Guy's rich, this is not normal guards at all! Yo! Are these royal guards? You know why this guy died, you know why this guy died here? He only has a... What's his weapon again? He only has a common warhammer that worth 97 goshen. I don't think can deal any damage at all. Uh, ghetto hat. What does the noble have, anyway? Nothing. Yo, the attackers have, have more money than the nobles in this place. Insane. Why did they even bring so much money? Yeah, that's it, that's it, that's all the attackers.
You wanted to talk to me?
I did. Because...
Just tell him. You may not get another chance.
I... I talked to Godwin. He said you know each other?
Oh yeah, he's my stepbrother.
Me?
We talked about your stepfather. Martin.
Why? Neither of you knew him?
It's true, I did not. But I tried many times. Remember how I stared at your sword when we first met? I recognized the master's symbol engraved there. Well... The thing is... I am... I am Martin's son.
What? Pa's son? How the-
Yes. His son. That is... His bastard son.
Why are you telling me this? I don't have time for this right now, water freak!
Are you sure? We look the same age, and... Martin lived with me and Ma as long as I can remember.
When I was born, he was already long gone. Maybe we are not even a year apart.
What does that make us, then?
Nothing. Proof perhaps that both your god and mine have a sense of humor. You know, all my life, I thought if I did not give a shit about that man, it would be easier. But now that I know I will never see him, it troubles me that I did not get to know him.
I'll tell you about him some other time.
I can tell you about him if you want. But now is not the right time. This is not the end. We have to go to Kuttenberg, now. Sigismund ordered confiscation of the property of people in the Jewish quarter.
The king has approved the Gezer.
He's no king to me, he's a fucking horse son!
What's a Gezer?
That is hard to explain.
Nonsense. It is as clear as day. Christians set out to kill our people, innocent and often defenseless. Ransack their houses and divide the loot, and all that with the king's blessing.
This is what we were afraid of. But we did not expect Sigismund to be in such a hurry. We need to get back into the city and get the people out, quick, before it begins.
These guys don't have money! I saw the Jewish quarters, they are like... They don't have very good, like, facilities and all that. What do they wanna steal? There's nothing to steal!
Good to see you both.
Why are you here?
Alive.
Oh, come on. You know I've walked out of much worse scrapes laughing?
They could well have killed us all. If it hadn't been for you, Henry, Von Bergoff could have caused a lot more harm.
Von Aulitz surprised even the king.
Von Aulitz surprised even Sigismund with that. You should have seen the look on the king's face when he told him.
Well... Thank God we all survived.
Well... Not all of us. They killed Lady Anna of Walstein, and many other nobles. It was slaughter.
And they captured our closest and most influential allies. Without them, we can hardly get the Burgers on our side. We're stuck.
We'll figure out a way to help them.
But how? Our plans are ruined.
Get a grip. Whining doesn't help anyone.
You're right. When I drink too much wine, I get overwhelmed with self pity. Nevertheless, I have to admit, it can't get much worse.
Actually... It might. Very soon. At Sigismund's council, an order was given to ransack the Jewish quarter.
God's wounds! We need to get back to the city and warn them!
I'm going with you.
Out of the question. Do you want to end up in prison again? You'll be more useful if you stay here and help Shishka. Henry, tell Samuel and the rabbi to get ready to travel. I'll try to get someone else to join.
Samuel already knows. And he's ready to go.
In that case, we'll set off immediately. I'm going with the rest of our people to Devil's Den. So don't leave me hanging, alright? Stay strong.
Thank God you're alright. On the way here, I saw Sigismund horsemen and feared the worst.
Kubianka? What brings you here?
Well, I heard you were having some kind of a feast here, so I came to grab a bit of meat. And I see, instead of that, you have a massacre here.
Yeah, we have a giant barbecue over here, so yeah, we already eaten a lot.
But of course! I borrowed it too, if you know what I mean, but...
Could you stop blabbering already? We don't have the time.
Easy, Ingol. And you, sir, if you can, come with us and help us.
Alright. But could you please tell me what the fuck is going on?
I'll explain to you on the way. Time is running out.
Are you coming too, Sir John?
Of course.
Who is Sir John? John Liechtenstein? Is that his name?
Let's go then.
Don't tell me Liechtenstein is gonna die. I like Liechtenstein. Bro, is this the fastest you can go?
Settle down, son. If you must keep your tongue busy, then use it to pray.
Would you tell me what the fuck is going on already?
Sigismund ordered an attack on the Jewish quarter. We need to get everyone out of there fast.
I need to eat.
Bloody hell. I just got hailed up so nicely today.
Oh. That is just great. My mother's life is in the hands of a drunkard.
Don't worry. We'll save your mother.
And everyone else too. Don't forget that.
The sheep care an awful lot about these people, sir.
Are you surprised? It's all my fault. If they weren't helping me...
That roid of Sigismund, may his name be erased. Would have found some other excuse to get rid of us.
Look, it's not that I don't feel sorry for you, but don't you think maybe we could make the horses go a little faster? At this pace, we won't make it there in a week.
We really should pick up the pace.
Alright. Schnell! Schnell!
Schnell is fast? Snail, snail. I'm going at the snail place. Oh, this is where-
What's the matter? Why are we stopping?
We will walk from here. We cannot drive right into those murderers' arms.
But, how do we get into the town, then?
We will go through Sherwil.
There are many abandoned mineshafts under the town.
Yeah, the smugglers route.
Won't it collapse on our heads?
We'll find out soon enough. Follow me.
I was looting the houses inside, like, Kuttenberg, I... I have found the... You know, the smugglers route, all these secret passages? I didn't know what they would use it for, but here it is. Now we know. I thought, I thought I- I thought I could find like, hidden treasures and stuff. But I couldn't find anything.
So... Do you hear anyone?
If they manage to get all the way here, it is all over.
No, I think... I must have just imagined it. Let's keep moving. We should split up here. Me and the rabbi will go this way to the shul. We have to take the Torah and warn everyone.
What about us?
You keep going straight ahead and then to the left. You'll get right to the King Solomon tavern. Gather up all the secret documents and wait for us.
Shouldn't someone come with you, just in case? How about Kubianka here? Henry and I can handle it.
Well, if you insist.
Was that all the contempt you could muster up?
Well, good luck. We'll see you up there.
We have to go this way.
We have to go this way.
Hopefully we'll find it quickly. I left a stack of my papers in the tavern. And if they fall into Sigismund's hands, people in other towns will die too.
Nooo, Lichtenstein is gonna die!
Hopefully, everything will be alright at the tavern. My stash is locked away and Samuel's friends are guarding the place. But who knows what the situation is like in the streets now? It's strange all the same, isn't it? Hundreds of people must have dug this tunnel. Years of hard labor in the darkness. The effort, the suffering. And today, God willing, we'll save a lot of folks suffering thanks to it. Damn it!
What's the matter?
The door leading up to the tavern is open. Samuel's men wouldn't have left it like this. Somebody else must have got in.
I think there's someone walking up there.
Go and check it out. If they took anything down here, they mustn't get out alive. I'll gather up my things in the meantime. I'll meet you outside the tavern.
Alright. About to kill you. Oh! Money? I would not, I will not let your coin go to waste, Moses.
Show your maidos!
Yo!
Search the whole place, they say. Bring any important looking documents. How the fuck should I know what an important document looks like? I ain't never seen none.
What the freak? He died? He was still standing just now. Then I had to run away. Okay, okay, okay. That's it. I thought, I thought we'd be fighting even more people. Oh my god, Sorryko died. I don't know who you are, but thank you for the 10 goshen.
Boreh Hashem, Henry. You're alright.
Sam? You're back already? How does it look outside?
A few of the cutthroats got in over the walls, but we dealt with them. But there are more outside the gate.
Four of them were here in the tavern too.
Fortunately, they didn't take anything important. But your friends paid for it with their lives.
What?
I'm so sorry. If it's any consolation, Henry here has already taken care of those cutthroats.
But they didn't look like they just came to the tavern by chance. Eric must have sent them. What about your mother? Is she alright?
She is, thank god. I told her to get ready and we would come for her right away.
I'm really sorry about your friends. We got here too late.
There was nothing you could do, but nervous, I'm out of this. This Eric is really pissing me off. I've never laid eyes on him, yet I cannot wait to wring his neck.
Oh no, I think Eric's gonna kill my stepbrother in the cutscene. That's a lot of red flag.
I'll lock the tavern and block the secret passageway so no one else can get in. But sir, if any more of them come here, I can take care of myself. Now go.
John's gonna die. John's gonna die!
Henry! My ma is waiting for us! Get her!
Where's your ma?
Oihimo! What's the matter? Where's Sam?
Don't worry, ma'am. He sent me to take you to him.
Minegot, what happened to him?
Nothing. He's out on the street helping the wounded. Let's go, now! We're out of time.
Wait! Who are you anyway?
Martin's son.
My name is Henry. I'm, um... Do you remember Martin, the blacksmith?
Of, of course I do.
I'm his... Son.
Well, Sockstum?
Sam told me that-
Watch out! More are coming! Run to the back, it might be safer there!
What's going on?
Sam, are you alright?
I'm fine, but we were told when you were safe. Now run!
We have to get to the synagogue. But how?
Through the backyard, follow me. Watch out, they're shooting at us! From the ramparts, get rid of them!
What if I don't have a bow? Good shit. What the fuck, Jack?
Hil! Help us!
I can't, I can't- I can't even open the door! Ah... Alright. That final gas. Shoot his butt cheek. Let's go!
Come on!
What the hell?
What is it, fuckers? Rather slaughter women? And the defenseless?
What's going on up there?
Nooo, dry demon! I don't know, that's not dry demon. No, 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 no. Is he gonna die? Yo, that's so cool!
Go inside, quick. To the fucking task.
I've never been so glad to see you two.
You need a helping hand, are you?
No. I just don't wanna die here alone.
Eric!
There they are!
Well... Now we're really fucked.
Mustn't get inside, we have to hold them back!
For how long though?
As long as we need to!
Okay, I'm gonna save the gun for Eric. Say hello to my little friend!
God made a joke when he met you.
Ow, stop!
Are you fucking kidding me? Have you ever held a weapon before?
I'm dead, I'm dead, bro!
Kill them! God will forgive you! Come on then! In the name of our lord!
Watch out!
He nearly got me!
I'll crush you to pieces!
Come on, everyone's inside! Henry, come on!
Let's go!
I thought he was gonna hit! Ah... I thought we could kill Eric now. Too bad. Hey, at least Lichtenstein is still alive. I thought he was going to be dead already.
It's this way.
Where's the mom?
Damn. That was a close shave. I reckon I should go to Samuel's mother and talk to her about Martin. I won't get another chance.
Look at it. All ablaze.
You alright?
I'm fine lad. I... I... Thank you. For everything.
I know this might not be the best time, but... Do you think we could talk about Martin?
Right now? Well... Alright then. How is Martin actually?
Dead. Sad.
He died. It's only been a few months. Sigismund burned down my village. Pa went to help Ma. They both died there.
I am sorry to hear that lad. But that is the Martin I knew. He always put others first. At least you survived. That would make Martin happy.
Well, I'm sorry I don't have better news to give you.
Do not worry about it. I am just sad he died before he could meet Samuel.
Is everything alright?
Yes. Do not worry. We were just talking about... About Martin.
How do you meet Martin?
How did you meet Martin, if I may ask?
It was such a long time ago. He wanted to open a blacksmith shop in town. But there was no place among your people, so he tried his luck in our quarter.
And that's where he met you?
The rabbi gathered the good men so they could decide whether we wanted to have a goy blacksmith. And Martin wouldn't stop looking at me all night. Then it went schlock of schlock.
Wow!
So what happened that made Martin leave you?
My Martin would never leave me. My father found out we were seeing each other and did his best to drive him away. To marry a goy is isur de orisa. Forbidden. But Martin would not give in and we kept seeing each other. Until one day, I was uvor.
That means pregnant?
Yes. My father knew that if word got out, he would not be able to avoid the shame. So he did not miss a beat and took me out of town in secret. I did not even have time to tell Martin the news. I was gone for almost four years. In the meantime, my father told everyone that he had married me off. But my husband died. And he only let me come back when he was sure people had accepted it.
And what about you? Did you ever find another man after that?
No. My father called me a widow. So I stayed a widow.
And he didn't try to find anyone else for you?
You know he did, but it never worked out. I made sure of that.
Wow, loyalty.
Did Martin not go looking for you when you suddenly disappeared?
People said he did go looking for me. Even as far as Colin. But he did not find out anything at all.
If only he had gone all the way to Prague.
Even if he went to the very edge of the world, it would not have been enough. Father would have hidden me somewhere else.
And did you ever go looking for Martin?
I asked around, but no one remembered anything. Or they chose not to. That was probably my father's doing too. And I could not just leave and go looking for him around the world. I had to take care of Samuel.
That father must be really powerful dude. A lot of influence.
Tell me. What was Martin like as a father?
Ah!
He was strict with me, but not too much. Especially in the fords, he worked me hard. Though I dream about him quite often. About that last day and... What he said to me while we were forging a sword together. He said a life of adventure can be over before it begins. And that blacksmithing might be a dull job. But I keep my head on my neck.
He was absolutely right.
Well... Look at me now.
You saved all our lives. Martin would be proud of you. He raised you well.
I'm sorry to keep you this long, but, um... Well, I never thought I'd have a brother. Even if not related by blood.
Well... I did not expect that either. And thank you, my almost brother. If it was not for you, I do not know how today would have ended.
I called you brother and you called me almost brother? He did not survive the vibe check.
We need to figure out what to do next.
I will see you there then. But first, I have to escort everyone to Colleen. I do not want anything to happen to them on the way.
Everything should be alright now.
Take care of yourselves, dear brother. I will see you this time tomorrow at the Devil's Den.
Have a safe journey.
So it's free reign now, can I like... Do anything I want? To the Lion's Den, consult Shishka on the next steps to take. Shishka? In the Devil's Den, right? Yeah, it is. Hello, bread king, welcome to the stream. Wait, can I, can I rob something here? Nope.
You managed to get the documents? What's next for you? Will you go to Jobst or come with us to the Devil's Den?
I've been thinking about it. And the time for spying is over. There's no one to convince. No one to break. No one to blackmail.
So what then? You going home?
Not yet. Actually, I'll escort these people first. I feel responsible for what happened and... Maybe I can at least make up for it a little bit.
How am I doing? I'm doing good! Having fun with the game, even though there's a lot of talking? Right? This stream alone is just a lot of talking because... Yeah, I don't know. Law building?
Alright, have it your way. Have a safe journey, Sir John of Liechtenstein. God be with you.
And with you, Henry of Skalitz. Take care.
Alright, the thing is, am I not invited to Kuttenberg anymore? Can I go inside there? Can I? Probably not, right? Can I? I can't, what? What? Holy shit.
Be careful, it is... Are you blind?
Yeah, I'm blind.
Mind where you're going.
Gonna put all the stolen items... Quote-unquote stolen items here, because I can't carry that much. Okay, royal waiter's hat, holy shit, that's so cheap. Yo, it's 32 groschen, I almost paid 2k for it. Almost got robbed! The money! Here's my armor. I feel like going back to the... The bath first before I ride out. I'm so dirty. Do I need to sleep? Nope, I don't need to sleep, I just need to eat. Gonna be a pain to walk all the way there. How was your day, bread king? Local guards are trying to start you see if you have stolen, anything stolen on you.
Halt! Search, show me what you've got on you!
Go ahead and search me, I've got nothing to hide.
Well, 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 what have we here? You didn't come by this honestly, you crook! I'm confiscating everything according to the law. And I don't want to see you now move along.
The ring? I don't care about the ring. Alright, I thought he was gonna confiscate something else. But even more, if it's just that ring, it should be fine. I got tons of that ring, I got tons of it. Where's the bath? How's the Jewish quarter coming along, huh? How is it? Alright, is this all? Yep.
It's not safe here.
Are you blind?
Fast travel to... Devil's Den. See armed men surrounding innocent person? Gonna rescue them then, come on. It's not my fault that she died so quickly. No way! I just got out from the bath and now I'm going back? Of course you're breathing. Yo, I'm dirty all over again. That was so not worth it. Okay, gonna grab myself a marigold. Should be fine. Lucky died, oh, lucky! Damn, in the arrow in the helmet? Slit meme? Yep, I have very good aim.
I bring bad news from Kuttenberg. Eric's soldiers and the town rabble have torched the Jewish quarter. Fortunately, we saved most of the people. But I doubt they can form an alliance with us now.
Fuck, where are they now?
Samuel and the rabbi took those who survived to Colleen.
Shit, we have to find Dry Devil and Capon and decide what to do next.
Samuel said to wait for him. He wants to be here when we discuss our plans.
But if he's gone to Colin, he won't be back till tomorrow, will he? Oh well, in the meantime, you can at least have a look for the men Dry Devil mentioned. Adam, Matoush, and the others.
I'll bring them, count on me.
Alright. So this is free roam, we can't go anywhere now. Can do all this freaking side quests and all that? Which could be fun? But I really want to take a bath, again! And none of these towns have baths at all. I don't understand why. This is not a bath. It's a smokehouse. I can probably, I can probably explore here. Let's do a little bit of exploring, man. I am tired of doing like, main quests. We need a little bit of less talking and more action. Maybe just by just killing all the bandits on the rune or something? Finding secret areas? Deer hunting spot. They should, they should totally fix the rain. Sometimes the rain... Looks like it's bugged? And it's just a copy and paste of the filter on the whole screen and it makes it very blurry? Now it looks fine, but sometimes it looks like shit. Horshen! Oh my god, so this is Horshen? So what does Horshen have? It doesn't, it doesn't look like a, a working town though. What does Horshen have? A town without facilities? Thank you so much for the rain, Seleniu, aren't you a little bit early today? Hello, Seleniu. Welcome to the stream, dropping in the return rain, you... I mean, you have raided me a lot of times. I was the one doing the return rain, now you returned the return rain, now I have to raid you next some other time. Alright, give you a shoutout. What are you guys doing? Hell Divers 2? Work, oh my gosh. How about like, sleep during work, sleep during work hours? Hide in the toilet? Alright, this is not a... Ah, this place doesn't have a shop, at all. It sucks, I would never come back to Horshen. Find your democratic run. Isn't Hell Divers 2 free to play? Oh yeah, it's not free to play, but pay to, pay to play. Are you buying all those battle passes for your Hell Divers 2? How am I enjoying Kingdom Come? It's addictive, it's immersive, one of the best games that I've ever played. I don't usually play these types of games, because it's a first-person melee combat game. What do you mean it's not pay to play? I thought you have to purchase Hell Divers 2? How was your Hell Divers 2 runs though? Were you playing with your, uh, your chatters? Nothing here, what a freak. There's... A huge fog of war and there's nothing? Who's that, who's that? Mercenary. Can you load it up? Oh my freaking god, took so long. And I missed. Say hello to my little friend! How did I miss in the point blank range? I hate guns in this game. He knows the master strike! Is that a combat system? Yep, it's like Chivalry. Have you played Chivalry before? It's somewhat like that, but a little bit more complicated. And in case CD too, we have gun. But you have not played Chivalry before? Could be your type of game. I didn't expect to, I didn't expect the horse to die in one shot, it usually takes two. I'm doing a little bit of exploring right now, because I'm taking a break from doing the main quests. Just want to explore. And see what we can find. Aren't you happy there's like, 24 hours McGriddle? In McDonald's now, for a limited time? You could grab one of those McGriddles during your lunch break tomorrow. How about that? Ah, there's nothing here. There's nothing but just grass. Alright, gonna move to the town over there, let's see what the town has. Hopefully that's a bath house. I need a bath, again. Miss Callwitz.
Easy, easy, nice and slow.
God bless you. I have nothing to do with it, alright? I have nothing to do with it, oh, holy shit! Alright, do you have a bath house? Thank you so much for the follow, miserablet147, welcome to the stream. Alright, usually, there is always usually someone sleeping over that, that area. Everybody respects me in this town, wow! How are we doing fine? We are doing fine, we are, we are searching for a bath house to clean ourselves up. Can't find it. I like this town. Everything is open air. And it has a very nice lake in the middle. Laundry! There you go. You can't wash yourself up anymore by the water. Try the bath house. There's no bath house here. Oh yeah, 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 I saw the fight.
Thanks. Anything else? What happened?
Alright, I think we got something up here.
Sounds interesting. Thank you Innkeeper.
Can I fight too?
Could I take part in these fights too? I'll give you something on the tavern's tab. What do you say? Why not try it? I'm in. We can start right away.
I want to admit this bathing. Alright, let's see what combat skills I can learn. I've never learned any of the skills for unarmed combat yet. This will be very useful later. Thank you so much for the follow, HiLian. Welcome to the stream. I, I gotta guess that the X is a silent, so I called you HiLian. After the first try and combat, subsequent unarmed attacks will cause 20% less stamina and will be 10% stronger. The effect lasts for 30 seconds. Ooh! It'll be generally easier for you to knock out or stealth kill someone. If successfully execute an unarmed combo, your opponent will be badly shaken and stamina recover 50% slower. I can't really land long, uh, combos. I'm very bad at combos. After the first 30 seconds of combat in which you're unarmed, your attacks will be 30% stronger and your stamina will recover 31% faster. I'm stuttering my words for some reason. After executing a combo, no, 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 no combos. No defeating. When fighting unarmed, you will gain 50% more experience in strength, agility, and vitality. Nope, I won't be using a lot of unarmed combat, so that one is useless. All attacks made during the clinch will deal 10% more damage. If you fight unarmed against an opponent with a weapon, alright, I would not do that. That would be stupid. Alright, none of these are useful anymore. I will just wait for a new level. Uh... What am I supposed to talk to again? Is it this, is this the guy? Is this the, is this the son? 10 Groushen, you only have 10 Groushen? Look at this chat, what a peasant. He's drunk. Holy shit. Yo, he's good! He knows how to dodge! Wow! Oh fuck! He has a lot of HP, man. Give me your 10 Groushen. Wah! Wah! Why didn't I fight him first? He's so irrelevant. Now I'm a little bit injured. Um... Is he here?
Shall we fight?
10 Groushen again. Yo, he's freaking good, chat. Fuck! No way! I lost the bet. Can I fight him again? Where is he? Nooo! Nooo! Where is that dude? What the fuck? If I, if I had more HP, I would have won. Freaking lost, chat. Yeah, kick you with the shin, dude. Alright. What do you mean guard?
What does the Innkeeper say about these fights of yours?
Not much. Why do you ask?
He's afraid you'll get into trouble. You beat the wrong bloke just once, and that's it.
What do you know about it?
I once fought with a nobleman.
No bloody way. And how did you enjoy the pillory? Did they give you a proper whipping?
No, I swear, it's true. And the punishment I got was far worse. I'm still acting as a squire for that whelp.
At least you have a story to tell in the tavern. Not everyone can boast that.
Yo, Han's capon isn't that bad. Hey, he doesn't... What? Han's capon doesn't mistreat you. He just makes you go on wild adventures to, and makes you get punished by noblemen and gets you in trouble. But the thing is, he also gets in trouble, so... It's not like you, you are the only one that takes the fall for everything. Now what? So I beat him, right? Talk to Pesto. Alright. Why do I have to talk to him again? Can't talk to him anymore! Yo, I got this quest off lock. Fuck. Only thing I can do is this. And hopefully he resets. Then I have to do everything all over again. Oh fuck. Is this, is, is this how he cheats my money? Thank you so much for the follow, Nospolas. And thank you for the hydrate. It's just water, by the way. I already drank two, two cupfuls of coffee in the morning and in the afternoon. Cause I couldn't keep myself awake. And those two cups of coffee didn't even do a lot for me. I was drifting in and out of wakefulness and sleepiness. I don't understand why. Thank you. Thank you for the compliment. So what do I do now? Challenge Marcus to a fight. Marcus? Alright, 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 right. I don't wanna pay the fine again. What's he gonna give me? A pint of beer? Get beat up just for a pint of beer? He actually gave me 60 Groushen and one beer. What's wrong with people fighting and betting on them? What's wrong with that? I think that's, that's pretty fun, right? Fight clubs? It's a fight club's run. I don't remember where my resting area is. Is it here? He said there's a barn behind the inn where I can sleep. So this is a... This is the inn. And behind the inn is a barn, right? Here? Is this it? It is not. Please, Henry. Please! This one? Oh, there it is, there it is. It is. Why doesn't this place have a... Whatever. It doesn't have a, um, storage space where I can save my items. You know what? I finished the quest here, right? Yo, none of these towns have facilities that I need. What is this? How to Matthew? Matthew? Alright. Let's go and talk to Matthew. Before that, I need to take free food. This is the most important food in the game. Two honey, that. Ten! Okay, that's a lot, that's nice. The only thing that I like about this game, the food, the honey is the best. It's free, it won't spoil, it makes you, it keeps you full. That's it. I survived the whole game from honey. I wonder what Matthew's gonna give me? Please let me fight some more. I don't want to do any more of those investigative quests anymore. Oh, those are wild dogs, alright. I thought there were only one. Wait, that feels like a secret area. There are like a lot of dogs guarding a single piece of land. Is there some place that I can dig treasures? I don't know, chat, this place feels special to me for some reason. It has a huge tree that has been toppled down. It looks like a landmark, there's a lot of dogs surrounding it. Feels like if you do one wrong move, all the dogs will come chasing after you. I wonder if I can kill that in one shot? Thank you so much for the follow, Akuma. And the dogs all disappear. Where all the dogs go? I can't believe they just stand there, do nothing. Maybe this place is bugged, I don't know. Usually, they just come chasing after whoever is shooting. Maybe here? Do I have a spade? I have. I have two spades. Sage. Fuck it, I conclude there's nothing here. I don't see any bounce spot. So... There's a lot of dogs, fear. What is this? Oh. I thought it's a random enemy camp, then I'm gonna kill all of them. Bandit. What the freak is Matthew? Yo, I was looking for Matthew! What do you want? Talk to Matthew? I don't know, I don't know. I'm here to talk to Matthew. Is that Matthew? No, it's a bandit. Why? I'm not your girlfriend, why are you waiting for me for, huh? I was here just to find Matthew. I should, I... I'm not supposed to kill all of you guys. You guys are... Yo, guys are so unlucky, is this Matthew? Ah, it's Matthew!
Mercy, I surrender!
What the freak? Wait, why do I need to talk to Matthew for? I found Matthew's camp in the rivers. Alright, hopefully I will find him too. Let me try to run away first. Maybe if I run away, he will forget about me and we can talk. They all came after me first, what can I do? What the freak? Wait.
I'll kill you. Attack! Come and help us!
Enough!
Just fight!
I give up!
You have no mercy from me.
I surrender!
Play games with me!
Enough!
Fight!
Enough!
Fuck you and your surrender!
I surrender!
Show your stuff!
Enough!
No yieldin', you piece of shit!
I surrender!
No yieldin', you piece of shit!
Mercy, I surrender!
I've been waiting for you!
Enough! I give up!
What am I supposed to do? Thank you for the hydrate. The thing is... If his band is so weak, why do I even need them? Wait, I heard there's a brawl that's gonna take part in this inn at night? Let me try and catch that fight. Guess they are not fighting. No fighting at all. Alright, I'm gonna sleep. Maybe I should do a no save, no death run. Only rely on auto save. Then if I die, I die. Wow, that's insane. Literally. It's already so easy to die in this game, man. I got the highest armor, I got the best armor, and I still get chopped off by bandits with thirty-dollar, thirty-groschen swords. I don't even know what my plate armor is for. Hey, at least I restarted and all the dogs came back to life, right? No one saw that. Only Matthew does not... If only Matthew does not attack me the first thing he sees me. Should be here. Where's Matthew? There he is.
Hey, what are you doing here? Who are you?
You must be Matthew, am I right?
Who's asking?
The Dry Devil sent me.
That old bastard is still alive? I thought he'd been executed a long time ago.
He's free again, thanks to us. He's getting his old band together, so they sent me looking for you.
That's so very sweet of him. So he whistles and I should come running to him like a good boy.
So, you don't want to come back then?
For the record, I have nothing against the devil, but I don't want to stick my neck out for fuck all anymore. I'm doing well for myself as my own master. The past is past.
And you're content with robbing poor souls by the road?
Ah, you are quite wrong there. I'm a customs collector, and it's still better than being with the devil.
The devil and Zishka have a higher purpose. We fight for our rightful king.
How? By capturing nobles and them demanding money for their release. We gutted their people, and they gutted us. But only the devil got the money and the glory. What the fuck is noble about that?
Alright.
This is going nowhere. I'll tell the devil we can't count on you.
I have to ask before you go. Could you pay the duty?
What are you talking about? What duty?
What do you think? To the king! I am his majesty's chief customs collector.
No, you're not!
And I'm Emperor Charles.
So where's the payment? A royal customs collector's time is precious.
What customs collector? You're just a bandit.
Peaceful difference. Those who have, give. Those who don't, take.
I shouldn't...
Cough up!
I shouldn't just like... One thousand?
The devil's counting on me to find and reunite all of his old band.
Why should I care?
What do you think he's gonna do when he finds out his capturer was all a setup?
Setup? What are you blabbering about?
Well, I'll just tell him there was a rat in his band that set him up. And I know who it was.
You bastard! No wonder you and the devil are like brothers.
Are we finally on the same page?
Aye, aye. It's bad enough I'm being hunted by the Miskovitz bailiff and the Sukdol captain.
All his being hunted? There's a bounty on his head? There's a bounty?
Seriously? I'm a bit of a local legend now.
You're not... You're gonna be a local legend, alright? After I kill you? Gotta go now! Alright, thank you so much for coming and staying, thank you, thank you. See you next time! And hello, Ms., welcome to the stream.
Thanks. That might come in handy.
Wait, he's gonna teach me something?
I'd like to learn something.
What do you want to know?
I'd like to improve-
Thank.
Don't worry, chat, we are going to get back every groschen from him later. Don't worry chat, we are going to get back every groschen from him later. You're gonna have a bad time, Matthew. I'm not gonna kill him right there in here, right? I'm gonna kill all his minions first with a bow and arrow. From afar, then I'm gonna... Gonna save the best for last. Already had it loaded up! Where are they? Are they sleeping? Oh? The fuck? Where did they go? No way, where did they go? Is it because of the rain? Ah, it's the rain, alright. Good friend. Just because it's ra- it's raining, they just disappear. Let me try if this loaded again. It is. Why does it always... What? Say hello to my little friend! What? He doesn't even know where I am now. So bad. Two thousand? That's all my money, right? That was all my money. Grab book from Sedlet. What does that even do? He says he's rich, but his armor says otherwise. Alright, let's raid the camp to see what they have. These band of bandits have nothing! What a freak! They were so hot, they are so high and mighty all the time and... They literally have nothing. Try to scam me of like tax money. What, protection money from the king or something? What does he even have? Alright, at least I get my bow, at least I get my arrows back. Those arrows are expensive. Even though I did not buy them, I stole them. Everything is free. Skill teacher is dead. I've learned everything I can from him. Now what? Nothing left. There's a man standing on the road, bravely chanting something. He's completely engrossed in what he's doing and he's never not noticed you.
Ah! I did it!
Who the hell are you?
My name is of no importance. I am your faithful servant.
What?
What are you doing here?
Why? I'm waiting for you. I did everything I was told, chanted the words, and you showed up?
You know who I am?
You're testing me, Darklord. I know I'm not worthy of uttering your name.
I'm a Darklord.
Speak. Your master commands it.
You're... You're the lord of hell? The devil? The dark tempter?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. What do you want from me?
What do you want from me?
Me? Want something from you, Darklord? No, I wouldn't dare. I can only humbly beseech. Pitifully implore.
Out with it then.
For a small kindness. A favor.
What favor?
I'd like the dice to roll like they've never rolled for anyone before, and win every game.
Alright, I will grant you that. Thy will be done.
Thy will be done.
Really? Thank you, Darklord. I'll be indebted to you to my dying day, and when I die... My soul will be yours. Won't it? That is the price.
As you say. Quid pro quo.
If I make enough to cure my Jane, it's a fair deal. She's beyond my wildest. My Jane will finally be well again, and maybe I'll even make enough for that little cow she was praying for.
Oh my gosh, I got a follower! I can't believe he called me Darklord. I feel so... I feel so happy right now. I need more of these people in this game. Come on! So happy. Call me Darklord! Holy shit! POI tipster. It's getting a little bit dark, can't see anything. Can't, I will go there some other time. Can't wait to find him back again. He's the only... Passersby that have not- That have not killed yet. Just because he called me Darklord. What a freak. Why is Godwin here? Alright, time to sneak.
Quelle putain de trou! Comment sommes-nous arrivés là avec une telle bande de crétins? Que Dieu me protège!
What is he trying to say?
What did you just say?
May I really help you, I am looking for what to the pleasure of your company.
Ah, alright. I need food though. Where can I find food? This is like my personal hideout now. Can just eat whatever. Alright, who am I supposed to talk to now? The outside?
Every day, right?
Can we start the meeting? We don't have much time.
Until we find Dry Devil's old gang-
Alright.
I killed them!
You said you were gonna tell me more about the devil's former band?
Has the lost Lichtenstein surfaced yet?
I'm here, aren't I?
Anyway, only a few fellows out of the whole glorious pack survived the shitstorm, and it's not certain they are still alive. As far as I know. Matthew, Bahuta, Ronyek, Janosh, and Eder survived. I only know where to find Bahuta, and maybe Matthew. But who knows?
Matthew is dead.
I already found Matthew. We can forget about him.
Why?
It seems he's taken a liking to robbing, and has his own band now. They tried to get me too.
Aw, I told you he was a fucker. Too bad. He could have come in handy. He was good at his trade.
Tell me about Bahuta first. Who is he anyway?
Well, Bahuta? He was always in trouble. Angry as a dog and covered in bruises. He and his brother could drink all the beer in the inn. Just the two of them. Then they would make a terrible ruckus.
It sounds like you three would get along well, but you said his brother was dead?
Yes, he died right before Bahuta's eyes. Not pretty. Bahuta has been acting weird ever since. He dropped everything overnight and turned to prayer, as if he was scared of being next in line.
Well, I don't know whether I could convince him or not. He seems like he's out of his mind already.
Where can I find Bahuta?
At the rectorine grunts. He helps out with the church.
Oh, he's in the church now? I don't think he will join you anymore.
Did you ever see him again after they caught the devil?
Yeah. But there was no reasoning with him.
Do you think it'll be different now?
Look, I don't know. Maybe when he hears the devil's back, he will come to his senses, but I doubt it.
I'll go over there and-
But be careful. Bahuta was never far from giving someone a beating. Maybe he's still got that in him. Waslawik, who kept him from ending up on the gallows because of the fights. Oh, but he's already with the lord.
What about the rest of the band? You mentioned more than one person.
Of course. That leaves Janosh, Eder, and Ronyek. I don't know where they are, but I can tell you about them.
Who is this Eder? What kind of nickname is that anyway?
Oh, that's easy. He's called Eder because he can't keep his snake in his breeches.
Bro.
He's Polish. He does not speak our tongue, so only Janosh can speak to him really. But otherwise, he's a fucking hilarious.
I wanna fucking hilarious guy? Hell yeah.
Do you know where he could be?
I have no idea. But if you find Janosh, Eder will be nearby. The two of them are practically inseparable.
Tell me about this Janosh.
Janosh? He's from Hungary. He speaks like a Tatar, but at least you can understand him a little, unlike-
And how did he get here? Did he defect from Sigismund?
Not at all. He did something back home, had the gallows waiting for him, so he fled to Moravia. He was having the time of his life until recently. Wine, women, and song. But now he has problems because people take him for a human. But if you knew how he can cook. Give him a dadrat and half a carrot, and he will cook you a three-course dinner.
Damn!
I'm already liking this Janosh. I think we'll get along well.
Janosh? Why?
Cause he cooks.
I like good food too. Life is always better with a full stomach.
You two will surely get along then. Janosh has seen a lot of the world, tasted everything. If you let him, he will talk about it all day long.
I would like that.
How can I recognize this Janosh?
Like I said, he looks a bit like a human. He speaks almost like we do, but in a queer way. When you talk to him, you will definitely notice it.
Oh, alright.
Tell me more about this Ronyek.
Ronyek? Has a great aim, slightly better than me even. Oh, and that bow of his, I tell ya, is a masterpiece. That is how you will know it is him.
How did he get that bow?
How do you think? He wanted playing dice, but that was the first and last time he ever won anything. Why, if anyone is really unlucky, it is him, but he would not stop if you were to cut off his hands.
Did you ever see him again after the devil was captured?
Oh, just once. He wanted me to lend him money. He did not have any to bet with. Ah, but I was skint and looking for a way to get the devil out of jail. Either way, I told him to fuck off, and he listened to me.
Do you have any idea how I could find him?
Oh, I don't know anything about him. Try asking around Edens where they play dice. It is possible he lost his souls in one of them.
Thanks.
Lemme some?
Alrighty then! I will want to look for this... Um... The one with the J first. Yo, there's no... There's no indication on where to start. I just have to look around. That's insane. I just have to look around. That's insane. What? Doctor Bahuta? Bahuta, where? Fine. A horse and a rider laying on the road, there's a bandit beside them searching the saddlebag. I'm gonna kill him.
I'll kill ya!
You wanna kill me?
Go to hell! I'll show you.
What? Are you a bandit too? I was shooting a bandit, why do you wanna hit me? There's some nice armor you have there. Thank you. And a nice die? Thank you. Holy shit! Grab everything. You don't deserve to have floats on. There. A shrinking die? That's nine. All for one noble? Or merchant, whatever? Just have to die like that? Huh? There's nothing else? Thank you so much for the follow, CyPiss37. Welcome to the stream. Gonna put everything inside my horse. Oh, crap. What does the white one... What's the difference between red and white? Why is this white? White stolen symbol? I still don't get that. I need to buy more arrows soon. I'm running out. Where's the flag? Is that him? No. Yo, Bahuta!
Praise be Jesus Christ!
Now and forever.
Excuse me. Are you Bahuta by any chance?
That's right, I am. If you're here to right old wrongs, be my guest. God knows I deserve it.
I don't need to right any wrongs. The devil sent me to see if you would rejoin his band.
He is free, and he still hasn't learned. Anyway, tell him I'm definitely not going back to that life.
Yeah, I don't think he was gonna go back. He's already at peace. And he's working in the church. I don't think he's gonna do anything illegal now. Uh...
Why don't you wanna go back?
I want to reform myself, to redeem myself before the Lord God, and to earn his absolution. There is no way to do that if I am with the devil.
I'd like to find the rest of the devil's pack. Do you know anything about any of them?
Just Ranyek. It has been a few days since he was here.
Do you know where I could find him now?
Last time, he told me he had a game arranged and pcheetocky. Maybe he's still there.
What did he want from you?
He was begging me for some coin. He said he had a game and pcheetocky, and that he would definitely win this time. As always.
Thanks. Hopefully I'll find him there. I'll be on my way. I probably won't convince you anyway.
Hold on. While you're here, we can pray for the devil's soul together. God knows he needs it badly.
It doesn't make sense. The devil doesn't care much about God's wrath.
Look at me. I used to kill, drink, spend nights with whores. But I learned that it was the wrong way, and now I'm trying to make amends.
Uh huh. Good luck then!
I understand. So be it. I can only wish you good luck.
I don't think the devil wants to be preyed... Preyed on. Doesn't care. Okay, in Kingdom Come Deliverance 1, you used to be able to go into any of the churches. Because there's a lot of things inside the church that you can steal. Like, in KCD1... Like, one of these has like... A room and a chest. But now all the churches seems to be like closed off, for some reason. Alright, Pincheck. Where is Pincheck? Here? Gonna fast travel to... Prepare an offering for the hell in the mine. It's not my problem. The Kuttenberg map is so big. Oh, I forgot to search for honey. Whatever. The town in Pincheck probably has like dried foods or something. Hey, what was that on the road? Anyone who's on the road are very unlucky to find me. Oh? Who might you be? Villager. Alright, he gets to live because I missed. First time ever stepping foot in Pincheck. Why?
Yes?
How about stretching those limbs and getting some light exercise? Shall we spar?
Alright, alright.
I know you. We've met before.
Oh yeah, Hornet? That's not a name you forget in a hurry.
You're not wrong there. But your name seems to have slipped my mind.
Henry?
Oh, that's right. Exactly.
How've you been?
Did a brisk bit of business, I can tell you. I stuffed my purse to bursting.
Sounds to me like you might have stolen something.
Watch what you're saying. I'd never do that.
I was just teasing.
I've been known to take on shady work, true enough, but never any fevery. So, fancy a fight?
Let's do it.
Exactly. Now you're talking. What are we fighting?
I have a proposition. If you win, you take the money. If I win, you teach me some of your skills.
Hmm. I recently took a man down with one punch to the mouth. If you win, I'll tell you how I did it.
One punch, man?
That's my wager.
Alright?
I can't wait to win.
Yo, he didn't say start! Freaking cheater!
In God's name! Wanker!
That's not what you say to people! Oh freak, gonna lose!
That was a good fight.
Good. Very good. Perhaps I'll have better luck next time. I promised you that punch in the mouth, didn't I?
Yeah.
No, you promised to teach me how to give a good punch in the mouth.
Alright, alright. In a fight, don't aim for the chin, aim for the jaw. More towards the ear. When you land a punch there, it works wonders on people. Most times, the wonder is how they drop like a rag doll.
That sounds good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think that is a very, very important lesson to be learned in real life too, if you are ever in a bar fight. Yo chat, you learned something new. You can just punch them in the ear, right below the jaw. You know, I mean punch them in the jaw, right below the ear, and they get knocked out. Next time, if I'm ever in a fight, I will take note of that. And hopefully he doesn't die. Holy shit, um...
I need a place to sleep and something to eat.
It would be an honor, and for how long?
I need to stay longer.
Ja, will you pay?
Agreed. Here's the money.
Sehr gut. I knew we'd come to an hour bets are clear.
I'm looking for someone. His name is Ranyek, and he carries a nice bow.
That means nothing to me.
And he plays dice... A lot.
Ja, jetzt weiß ich's. Gestern hat er sich völlig betrunken. Yesterday with some pole, they were causing a ruckus until the morning, and I'm still feeling sick.
Where can I find Ranyek?
Where can I find this Ranyek?
Try asking the man who paid for his losses yesterday.
Was he broke?
He lost a small fortune here yesterday. It looked like he was going to get a nice beating because he lost more than he had. But a bunch of carla from Bilani, who also came to play, lent him some coin. I reckon they felt sorry for him.
And you know where I could find these men from Bilani?
In Bilani, I reckon.
Bro...
Thanks a lot. I suppose.
Tut mir leid. I can't really think clearly after last night.
Why have I done to him?
I would ask the Bilani innkeeper. With luck, you will run into them right there.
Why would they pay for Ranyek? Did they know each other?
I do not think so. Maybe they just felt sorry for him. They played a lot themselves, but you could see that Ranyek just could not stop.
Yo, remind me to not lend him money.
This drunk pole? Was his name Eder by any chance?
Ja ja, Eder. They say there is a whole geschichte behind it.
Aye, I know it. I'd like to know where he is now.
You should ask the butcher's wife, Eve.
Why should I ask the butcher's wife?
Well, why do you think?
Do I have to make you say it? How does this concern Eder?
It's just some village clutch.
Look, I've heard a lot about Eder. If he was sticking it where he shouldn't have, I'd rather know before some cuckold comes at me with a pitchfork.
Knowing our butcher, you're not far from the truth, glaub mir. Let's the nacht, Eder suddenly disappeared, just at the same time as the butcher's wife-
Oh my god!
She left alone at night?
Leider ja. Her man passed out on the table right there in the inn. What else could she do?
So, Eder took the opportunity?
Natürlich.
So where is the local butcher's?
If you go to the village from here, the butcher's grundstück is the very last one.
I'll go to see her. Maybe she knows something.
You should be careful. The butcher does not like seeing other men around his Eve.
I'll be on my way.
Yo, the butcher's... The butcher got cocked. By a person that can't really even speak. Uh... Wait. Bilani. What? Why is it so far away? Yo, imagine? Imagine live here, right? Inside this inn, and in order to like go to take a shit? You have to walk out through the streets and come here to take a shit. Oh my freaking god. Is this a toilet too? Nope, it's not. I don't think so, right? It's a smoker. And there's only like one toilet in the whole village. You have to fight with all the guests from the inn and the tavern. I will never want to go back to medieval ages. It's insane. You know when I live in Singapore? I live in Singapore, right? There's like this housing program where the government upgrades your toilets and your... And everything? Your toilets? And during that time, the toilets are not av- our house toilets are not available for one week. So there's like public toilets right below our house. And we have to go there to do our deeds, like bathing and, you know, everything. Such an inconvenience. It was such an inconvenience that my family booked a hotel for four days because... Two weeks wasn't feasible to... It wasn't... It wasn't ve- it was not su- Oh, I can't even say anything now. It's so inconvenient. Like, if I wanna take a piss at 3am, I have to go down. And thankfully, when I do that, none of my neighbors are there. Nobody suspicious are there. The butcher bit his wife!
I'm looking for somewhere, and the innkeeper said you might be able to help.
Is that so? Who is it?
A wandering man-at-arms. He's a foreigner, a pole. They call him Adar.
And the innkeeper sends you to me? How nice of him. As if the whole village didn't know already. Now he's going to tell everyone who just walks by. Who are you anyway? Some friend of his?
On the contrary. They've sent me to find him. He's a dangerous cutthroat. I have to catch him before he hurts more people.
Christ, is that really so? He's going to murder my old man! He and the other men dragged Adar out of the village, saying they'll kick his ass! But now I'm more worried about them!
Let's go, let's go! They say you're seeing Adar.
And where will I find your husband, Adar, and the rest?
Outside the village, in the direction of Kuttenberg. There's a lone tree in the middle of the field. You can see it from a distance. They said that's where they'd take him, so that no one can see them.
Oh shit!
I'd better go and see your husband. The sooner it's over, the better.
Hurry up, please. Be with you, sir.
Father husband beat his wife! And she still cares for the husband, holy shit. Okay, where is she? Where, where are they? Here? Rescue Adar. Oh, there's the tree. Look at that, that majestic lone tree, right up the hill. Oh, he's still alive! He's gonna get hanged by the villagers. Called me a prick!
What do you want? And who the hell are you?
Leave him alone, and untie him.
Why would I do that? Do you know what that bastard did?
No, no idea. But I need that man alive.
No idea, eh? I'll tell you then.
Alright, tell me about it.
That horse son defiled my wife! My Eva, eh? He should be glad we're only gonna hang him. If I had my way, we'd castrate him as well.
Wait... Did she cock, did she cock her husband, or what? I don't understand. I don't have to answer anything to you.
That scoundrel belongs to the lord of Sukdal Fort.
What does he want with him?
He defiled the lord's cook, two maids, the captain's wife, and stole a statue of the Madonna from the chapel, over which he then did all kinds of yewed acts. They're building a gallows for him at Sukdal.
But, but what about me? I want satisfaction too, or at least compensation.
You want to argue with Peter of Peseck's armed men? They're already on their way.
As you wish, she's all yours. But the cow is mine, and she's coming with me.
Oh fuck.
Then what am I gonna do? Shoot, shoot the rope down?
He's twitching too much. I'll have to cut the other end on the tree.
It's so stupid. Wait, wait, wait. Where's the ball that he had? Where's his ball? I don't understand what you're talking about.
I reckon you want to know who I am, right? I'm Henry. Henry. Janosz? You mean Janosz Uher? You mean Miskowitz? Janosz is in Miskowitz? Fantastic! I'll go and get him, and we'll be at the devil's den in no time. He was what? Doesn't matter, I'll find him. You go to the devil's den.
It would be even better if they just put, they just use that language, then I don't understand what he's talking about, that, the verb, what he's trying to tell me. Now I know he got caught instead of like he's ran there for himself. The surprise is gone. Miskowitz. Janosz. Alright. Wasn't I just, wasn't I wa, wasn't I there just now? Or was it in Bilani? No, I did not go to Bilani before. What? I was here just now! What the freak? I went in suckling pig? Where's your suckling pig? Freaking liar. There's no suckling pig? Is this Janosz? I was throwing stones at this guy just now! Oh my freaking god. I was literally throwing stones. I didn't know he was a important NPC.
Could this be Janosz Uher?
Yo, I want to talk to you.
Hey, what are you getting, fish face?
Uh... Dry Devil sent me. He's looking for you.
Tell him Janosz busy.
Oh. Alright then.
Nority, I just pulling pizzle. Get me out of here, brother. My neg online, eh?
How can I get you out of here?
Wait until bailiff's henchman fuck off, then pick lock.
Alright, I'll try to pick it.
Quick, that fucking yokel die any moment to spite me.
What's happened?
I was hungry. I want bite to eat. You, you understand, eh?
Course I understand. When I'm hungry, I find something to eat. That's obvious.
Finally, somebody understands.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I just look around for something. What happens? This cock up come back. Everybody can shit himself. You do, no?
Who came back?
What I know? Some cunt. He's so crazy, he go for me. That's some crazy shit, no? What can I do, eh? I wag him a little bit, and now bailiff waiting to see if he die, and then I go swing.
Tell me again, how am I supposed to get you out of here?
You pick this fucking lock, but do not get catched.
Sure.
Supposing I had a word with the bailiff?
You soft in head, eh? Where they will find you? You remain bailiff, he come hang me right away.
I can't make it any worse.
What do you expect from that? If the yokel don't get better, bailiff never let me go.
You're right.
Here, just what I say.
I'll try to get you out of here.
Do it quick, pre-
Oh man, he's back! Can I wait till night? Okay, let me see if I saved already. 2:10. Alright, let's save. Oh! I don't even care about the do, the guy. The one that he almost killed. I just want him. He's a funny man. Yo! He has nice items. Pillory key. Fine. Don't have to lockpick then.
What are you doing? Eh?
I'm freeing you. Go straight to the devil's den. Dry Devil is expecting you.
Thanks, fella. We meet there.
Oh shit! The guard didn't even recognize him. What the freak? What kind of security is that? You're under arrest here, run to the guard who's trying to arrest you for your crime. What crime? What? What crime?
Hey! What have you done? You freed a murderer! Halt!
Easy now, I surrender.
Did you think you'd get away with that? Freeing someone from the pillory, as if you were a guard? Not a chance!
I'll pay the fine, this 100!
Please, look at me. Do I look like a dishonest man? This is all just a misunderstanding.
Oh, uh... I apologize, my lord. I must have made a mistake. Let's just forget about this. Right, out you go. I'll be watching you.
Wow. Yeah, 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 yeah. It was just a huge misunderstanding. Alright, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out already. Who is this guy? I almost killed Janosz. Can I actually kill Janosz? Can't. Can I steal something from him? I can't. Alright.
Wait, good man!
I pray for a quick death, you bastard.
Yo, just three of them!
Take that, you shit! You want to try me? I've been waiting for you!
Hell yeah. Three? You think you can take me on? Come on, I'm already le, like level 30. I almost died though. What do we have here? Why does he only have 1.9 gromm? This is huge! That dice very precious. It always rolls on the three. If I have a whole set of it, then I would always get 2400 points. And I would never lose in a dice fight. I just want to go to devil's den and have a sleep. Pretty far away. Polite armed man. Man standing in the middle of the road, smiling and looking for someone. He doesn't look dangerous, but he's armed. Who knows what he's doing here?
What's going on? Well, it seems like this was a waste of time.
Hey, good man! I need to speak with you! Hey!
What are you doing hanging around here, old man? Are you alright?
Um, not entirely. I'm Sayejek of Hololavia.
And I'm Henry.
Hololive.
I'm terribly sorry, but this is an ambush.
What?
Please don't make it harder for me than it already is, and surrender nicely. I don't want to hurt you. Are you yanking my pizzle?
Unfortunately not. Turn out your purse so we can get this over with.
Touch me, and I'll break your legs, you old fool.
Calm yourself, my good fellow. Believe me, this hurts me as much as it does you.
I sincerely doubt it. What kind of peculiar robber are you?
Robber? How dare you insult me so?
What else should I call you?
I am a man of honor! Only I've been a bit down on my lap- Only I've been a bit down on my luck recently.
I almost cut him down.
Even this ambush isn't working out too well for you? What you were shouting at me sounded more like... rather rude begging for arms.
And what was I supposed to say?
Your money or your life?
Your money or your life? That usually does the trick.
But I don't want to take your life. I just want money.
Can't you find some fucking other way to earn coin? You said you're a knight, right? So go and serve some lord.
I'd have to get my horse and armor back first. Without them, I'm useless as a knight.
Someone stole your horse and gear? How?
It's a long story.
Cut it short. Otherwise you might drop dead before you get to the end.
Until recently, I served in Sigismund's army. But I had a quarrel with the commander, one Zavish of Garbov. We insulted each other so much, that I ended up losing my temper and challenging him to a duel. And you lost. We each bet our horse, our armor, and knightly honor. And I lost all of it.
That's really bad luck.
We were getting supplies in Betwahr. And Zavish had the whole village torched without blinking an eye. I was the only one who spoke up against it.
He's trying to convince me to give him money. That's also like robbing me.
No good deed goes unpunished. Now, I'm trying to get enough coin to get my things back. And you seemed like a skilled fighter. That's why I chose you. If I must do something so despicable as robbing people, then at least they should be capable of defending themselves.
Wow.
And how much money do you actually need?
Heaven knows. In truth, I don't know if Zavish will speak to me at all. But I have to at least try.
What if I tried to help you? I'll go to your commander and try to convince him to give it all back.
You'd do that for me?
Well, I offered, didn't I? So, where can I find this man?
In Sigismund's camp. His name is Zavish of Garbov. He has a black eagle and three yellow stones on his coat of arms. He's got a rather inconspicuous tent above the camp kitchen. Hopefully you'll find it.
And how will I recognize your things? Is your coat of arms on them?
Of course, on my quirass and on the comparison of my horse Gringolet. It's the same as I have on my shield here. A black raven with a ring in its beak on a yellow ground. If you get my things back from Zavish, come and see me in the tavern in Shitok.
Oh, that's how you... That's how you pronounce the name, Shitok. Yo, but I'm going to invade Sigismund's camp. How do I even get in there? Wouldn't I be cut down before I managed to get even a foot in? Alright, it's deadly. What? It doesn't even tell me where to go. It seems like he... Sigismund camp near the kitchen. Alright, I have to find Sigismund camp first then. It's probably not today.
Keep close to the others. It's not safe here.
What? Alright, this is it for the stream for today. We had done a lot of stuff in KCD2. And I'm gonna end the stream right now. Thank you guys so much for... for joining me on this journey. Thank you, thank you. We have done a lot, but there's a lot of talking today too. There's very little fighting. Try to get more fighting the next time. Try... I... I wanted to find like bandit camps still. And I managed to find one, but it's the quest camp. And I got scammed. Alright. Yeah, this fi... Let me find someone to raid. Raiding time. Is anyone in my friends list playing KCD2? Nope. Nope, nope, nope. Bad. Alright, we are gonna wait raid... Whoa, Nano's playing Pokemon. Pokemon mystery dungeon, explorers of the sky. I have no idea what that game is. It seems really interesting. Alright guys. Thank you guys so much for coming. And see you guys probably tomorrow. And Thursday we are gonna play the new Yakuza game. Bye bye!